Clerk, are we, we're recording now, so we're live. And I see we have. But all our, we have all our councils here except Council Post, who I suspect may not be joining us.
Oh, she joined us. She just popped in.
Oh, there we go. Good. Glad to see it. So with that, I'd like to resume this, the regular meeting of council for February 17th, 2021. Or remind the audience, well, I'll just say that it is a virtual meeting and that it is being streamed on our website and also televised by Rogers. And I believe will be available on our YouTube channel later. I'd like to just do our town, our acknowledgement that the town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people. Now known as the Chippewa Tri-council comprised of Bosley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre-confederation Treaty Five, Treaty 16, and included within the Williams Treaties of 1923. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land which is the traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and historic homelands of the Métis. And that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. So with that, I'll call the meeting to order again and ask that we all take a few moments to think of those people who find themselves in distress as a result of COVID and COVID-related matters. Thank you. With that, I'll ask if there are any declarations of conflict of interest. Seeing Councilman.
Sorry, I, I'm going to be declaring a conflict of interest specifically on the public art item. And I can speak to the public art policy at a high level. So I will declare, I'll be declaring a conflict as part of the budget next week on that one particular item. But I will be able to speak to the public art policy in general. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other conflicts to declare? Seeing none. So we know conflicts that we, we're in a closed session prior to public meeting and I have some motions arising from the business in the closed session. So I'll read those into the record and ask for a vote. The first is moved by Councillor Gordon and second by Councillor Post. The staff report CSR 2021-6156 Marina Park Avenue Settlement, dated February 17th, 2021, be received for information and one that council direct staff to do all things necessary and execute all required documents in order to accept the recommended settlement offer as presented. Council, you've heard the motion, comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Second, I have a motion by Councillor Cunningham and seconded by Councillor McGinn. The council receive as information the verbal report provided by the mayor and CEO at the closed meeting session of council held February 17th, 2021 regarding the shelter now supportive housing project. And further, the council support the request in principle pending confirmation of participation by other parties in the manner by which they have indicated they would participate. Comments or questions by council on this, on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That too carries unanimously. And finally, the last matter arising from the closed session is moved by Deputy Mayor Ross and seconded by Councillor Oshatsky. The council receive as information the verbal report provided by the Executive Director of Corporate Services Town Solicitor at the closed meeting session of council had held rather February 17th, 2021, regarding the litigation update respecting police services. All those in, you've, so you've heard the motion, all those in favor? Thank you. That carries and please, please note, Madam Clerk, that Councillor Gordon recused himself on that vote. And now we have the agenda. So I have a motion here by councillor, sorry, councillor Downer, moved by, and seconded by Deputy Mayor Ross, that items and related recommendations contained within the February 17th, 2021 consent agenda as consent items having been considered by council be adopted with the exception of item 10.4.3 CSR-2021-8 Huronia Airport 2019 Strategic Development Plan Next Steps, which will be considered under section 15 reports and other items withdrawn from consent agenda per council's consideration. So before I ask for a vote, I have Councillor Gordon.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, then I think Councillor Main had his sign up. I don't have my signs with me tonight at work. I didn't request to pull anything, but I did want to speak to a couple of the items. So I'll just go down the list. The one is in our CIP Council Information Package from the 29th of January. Busy Bee Taxi, one of our local businesses, I'm sure everyone's familiar with, put a request in for us to consider stop signs at Bay and First to make it a four-way stop. And as is sort of typical when things go into the, when things go in the CIA, can you guys hear me? My, yes. Okay, sorry. That's typical when things go in the CIP. You know, it's up to us to do something with it, pull it out or just, you know, off it goes into oblivion. So I wanted, I mean, I've read, I read these things and I just was had a question for staff. What, you know, are they looking for our direction to do anything with this? Or is this just like listening to a guy tell us something in a coffee shop? So I'll start with that one if we're going to be considering this request.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Through your worship, Councillor Gordon, we have to bring forward to council a traffic calming policy. And so we have likely half a dozen requests that we have to evaluate right now. So what we're going to be doing is bringing that policy forward and then bringing all these requests that we have to date as a, you know, the trial run through that policy. And I hope to bring that, you know, the last meeting in March or into April will bring all these requests because we have three or four. And tonight there's another speed reduction request on the agenda for later tonight. So I think it's better we look at it from a policy and just bring all these issues together at once, if that's the will of council.
Makes perfect sense to me. Thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure we talked about it. So he knew that, you know, we read these things and do something about it. My next question is on the public art policy. And I have a few comments after reading it. First of all, I think it's, it's really amazing that our staff was able to secure grant funding for some of the stuff on King Street and $100,000 at least year one earmark from that grant for art. So that's cool. And we've all seen the public art installation or probably those of you gone to Pen and Tang Machine, seen the big shiny ball on the hill that just refuses to roll down the hill. What I'm wondering, I got a few questions on this one. Is it possible that we end up with one public art installation that consumes a whole 100K? Or is there some kind of mandate that I couldn't maybe missed? That says, you know, we're going to pick a few different locations and different types. And then you allow for more variety and putting a cap on, you know, how much it is per. I guess my only concern is we may end up with, you know, and I get artisans in the eye of the holder. You know, 100 grand for a bunch of wooden crates painted different colors out front of town hall. Kind of like what happened in Barry, not belittling that as art. It isn't to me, but that doesn't mean it isn't to someone else. I'm just wondering though, that 100K, can we spread it around if there's a plan for that? So that's one question I hate. Sorry, I just hate to go on and on, but I'm going to just pound through these questions. Hopefully they're, they make sense. Secondly, are we going to be sourcing from local artisans or are we going to the broader public market? It wasn't clear to me that we're putting any kind of locality around sourcing this. I understand we're challenged from doing that for bids for, you know, construction and stuff, but this is our art installation. Let's, we should be focusing on our local artisans if possible. And also it says, how is it, how, how, how would $100,000 of art in a public setting be insured for $140 plus tax? It just, it just sucked something that stuck out to me that, you know, with our insurance going bananas everywhere. As people see in the budget draft, that it would only be $140 to ensure $100,000 art installation. I want to make sure that wasn't a typo. I do have three more, but maybe I should break it up into, into two asks of three questions. If anyone can comment on those first three.
Who care to comment on the?
So the first one was about, can it all be in one bucket? Or can we have once multiple pieces of art? That was the first one.
Mr. Coco.
And to Councillor Gordon, I believe the intent when Karen was drafting the policy was to try to be as inclusive as possible and to not limit the different pieces of public art that would be considered. So in response to the first two of your questions, I, I don't foresee all of that money being spent on one piece of art because I think it's kind of contrary to the intent of the overall policy and engaging local artists and trying to have as much input as possible. And also the creation of a, a group that would review the public art pieces in order to make determinations. And in terms of the insurance question, she actually did go through our insurer to get a quote so that it was adequate and making sure that we are covered. And also that's in addition to the fact that whoever is bringing the art forward is going to be responsible for that up until the point of installation as well.
Okay, that's a bargain. Okay, my next three is a section two where it says the policy states that the art on temporary loan will become part of the town art inventory. That's probably not what you meant. It sounded like everything else in that paragraph, they're basically giving it to the town and it becomes ours. But it, just the way it literally reads right now, if somebody temporarily loaned us some art, it reads like it becomes ours instead of us, you know, giving it back, which sort of doesn't align with the word loan or temporary. So I'm just wondering if that's just a, you know, wordsmithing needed. And same thing with de-accessioned art. There's a word and I'd have to look up, never even knew it was a word. It says we'll notify the artist when council deems that the art is, you know, ready to be put out to pasture. But it doesn't give us any option or the artist to any option to come and reclaim their, take it back. I get we've already paid for it, maybe they deleted it, but rather than just saying, hey, we're about to rip down your paint over your mural or something. It'd be nice to give them the opportunity to come and get it, not a mural. That's a silly example, but you know what I mean? And I had one more, but it's, it's actually, I answered my own question in my head. So those are the last two, mostly around wordsmithing.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody care to answer the councillor's question?
Andy, are you taking this one?
You're welcome to.
I'll take either one.
You don't have to really answer me. I'm just drawing it out for you. That's the way I read it. And I'm just concerned that, you know, if somebody wanted to hold us to it, literally it's, you know, they lent us some art and we're like, ah, it says right here, we own it. So just wanted to call it out.
And there may very, I'm sorry, through the, through the chair to Councillor Gordon, there may very well need to be, take a closer look at the wording that came through. Sometimes editing can cause some issues. My understanding is that ultimately we would own the artwork. At the end of the day, however, the artist would maintain their artistic rights, if you will, to that artwork. So if we need to take that back and you'd like us to wordsmith a bit before it goes through, we can do that. Or we can perhaps do, do an amendment after this goes through and bring it through at the next council.
Sure. My, my only concern was around temporary loan. That would seem to be the outlier in that statement, but I will leave it to my peers. We can edit this thing whenever. I just, it's something that popped out when I was reading it with my critical lenses on.
Thank you, councillor. I have Councillor Main and then Councillor McGinn. And I think the cat wants to speak.
My cat. Careful.
Is it, is it me?
You're next, absolutely.
All right. Okay. So one, one item on the consent agenda that's also worth noting is a letter from resident thanking us, one, for not only doing King Street rejuvenation, reconstruction, and separating our combined sewers, but also she wanted to thank us for extending, which we didn't do, the County of Simcoe did, which we're partners with on the corridor for 93, the 93, 93 complete street program. And so having sidewalks up there, there's stores in town that were not accessible by pedestrians. And so, you know, people who are just mobile on just feet only are very appreciative of those sidewalks extension. So I want to say thank you for writing that letter, thanking us. So we want to, we can't take all the credit. The County of Simcoe took a lot of the work. So on to the other two items, the one thing I really like, the public art policy, it's great now that we have enacted this. I remember talking with the Executive Director of the Quest School, who also happened to be named Karen Mealing, it may or may not be the same person. But one thing that's great about it is obviously the high-end stuff is your sculptures, which are much more permanent. But one thing is great is the, you know, the temporariness of public art. And so obviously Midland has a huge history of murals. Unfortunately, our murals do have an expiry date, so we have to continue to refresh them, renew them. And sometimes we might let them retire. There is new opportunities to be putting colorful paint and art all over the place. And it actually, a lot of municipalities are incorporating public art into their complete street policies so that, you know, a, a bus stop is also a public art or a bike rack is also a cool little public art. And you integrate art because it's not trying to make the streets nice for cars to walk on. It's making your streets nice for pedestrians, for shoppers. And you put art in your parks, you put art in your downtown, and you really just try to liven up the place. So I like that we really touches on a lot of things that are, it's very inclusive. So I think that's the most success that the town of Midland is going to be doing is, you know, renew, renewing our murals, but also looking at putting paint on the ground. I know the Paint the Park project that we did a couple of years ago with some high school students, that's still there and you still see people coming back year in, year out, adding more designs and putting paint on the ground. But what you're also now seeing is paint as traffic calming. And so you see paint now spilling out into the roadway. And so this is where Andy Campbell is, he has steam coming in his ears because we have a higher level of standard when paint is now in the road. And so the city of Hamilton's actually developed a decorated crosswalk guideline. And so you can actually have, you know, conventional pedestrian crosswalks, but then also add a little splash of color to make it lively. But it also is still functioning as a crosswalks. The engineers have, you know, safety regulated roadways. So there's lots of opportunities for here and to Councillor Gordon's point, you know, a big awesome sculpture, like a cool swan down at your harbor front is always cool. But also we can put a little bit of paint here and there. So the flexibility of that and the experience of the staff that we have, I think this is going to be a great initiative. And for people who are obviously heavily scrutinizing us for amount of money that we're spending, a lot of this money is from grants. So it's not something that we're spending frivolously of we've, this is grant money. So thank you for that. And I just wanted to make a quick point on the Ontario Municipal report that was very eye-opening, seeing the different level of analysis of how much the municipal government transfers to the lower tier municipalities. And at AMO, at AMO conferences, a lot of people have talked years and years how the province has been downloading and then giving less and less money to lower tier municipalities. So this is a, it's great when we have this analysis in the data to kind of show maybe the province needs to, you know, to use an outdated reference, show us the money. So I very much appreciate that report. So thank you again for all the hard work from staff and greatly appreciate these reports.
Thank you, Councillor Main, Councillor McGinn.
I'm so briefly wanted to speak to, you know, art on loan. And I can personalize here that my grandmother was an artist and she has art that is in a museum. And I have some of her originals. I also own some original art. And I'm not talking about just my children's art. I'm talking about artists who make their living doing this. And so I may own the piece and for one specific one, they kept it in their collection. I got the first print and they're allowed their artistic integrity to make prints and to showcase it. So it was just, just that I, that personalization that I thought perhaps that has, has to do with some of the language around an artist continually to own their piece. But you have it or you have, you know, print one. It was just an arrangement that I made with the artist. That's, that's all I wanted to say. And I think it's fantastic that we're going down this route. And it's really nice to hear Councillor Main, you know, talking with such passion.
Thank you, councillor. I agree. Councillor Cunningham or the cat, whichever.
I think I'll take it. My cat is sometimes incomprehensible. I just wanted to point out in our council information package from one to five, the Culture Alliance final report on the conference, the cultural conference that we had. It was an impressive endeavor. And we had Fred Hacker, Karen Mealing, Rogers TV, a ton of volunteers working together to bring eight sessions online through Zoom to our artisans, our creative community, the creative community organizations that support them. It went fabulously well. It was a surprising initiative. And in addition, all of those pieces were recorded by Rogers TV so that they can stand in perpetuity or until we replace them on the website. But you can find them at culturealliance.ca. You'll find the conference link right there in the top menu. You can also have a look at how much more beautiful our site is getting every time you go back to it. And click on that link, you'll find each of the presentations is annotated beneath each one, you'll see, watch this session now. So you can have a look and see some of the inspirational ideas that came up about how do we cope with COVID in a world where, you know, you really needed to be out there performing and networking and getting in front of others through fairs and art shows. And some pretty unique ideas came up that will actually withstand the test of time because some of the innovation that we're seeing because of COVID is going to make these businesses stronger afterwards as well. So if you haven't had a chance to look at that, you don't necessarily have to read the CIP. You can hop right over to culturealliance.ca and click through the recordings.
Thank you, councillor. I would just like to, Councillor Main touched on it, the Ontario Municipal Partnership Funding. I just, Councillor, sorry, the CAO, I just wanted to see if he had anything he'd like to put out there with respect to this before we move along. CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and no, thank you for the comments from Councillor Main as well. It was certainly the intent of, of staff and, and myself to make sure that some of the facts around OMPF funding were made available. Certainly as we look at the budget process, I know there's a repeated concern being expressed in the community built tax rates in, in some communities like ours. And one of those elements that needs to be understood is the historical context of funding that have been given to municipalities. And the OMPF is the lifeline for so many municipalities. Very small ones like the one that I came from, that's, that's really their only primary concern of funding. So for a small community up in Northern Ontario with a population of 5,000 people, it's not unusual to see OMPF funding of multimillion dollars because that's all they have. And they have to pay for all those services. In Southern Ontario, or at least the near north, like where we are, there's a bit disparity, as you can see, depending on your classification between rural, where you stand with in terms of your assessment value relative to the province, on what amount of funding you can get. And quite frankly, your proximity to the GTA and mass transit plays a lot into this as well, certainly from the assessment side. If you happen to be in that particular strike zone where you are deemed rural, but still close to Toronto and still have access to mass transit, you can still participate in the OMPF funding. That's not incorrect. That's just how the, how the system works. If however, you happen to be a little off the beaten track like Midland, if you're not designated rural to any great extent like Midland, and if you have economic factors that don't allow you to participate in some of those other financial considerations for funding, then you get relatively small funding to other areas. And some of those areas are quite close to us. So when you compare tax rates of Midland to some of your neighbors, it is a fact you must consider when you look at that. And that type of funding as illustrated in the, in the document adds up significantly over time. The data that was given was, was over the last nine years. It's publicly available. You can get as much detail as you, as you like. But it does show a pretty wide differential between a number of communities. So again, I, I hope you found that useful. I think it is important context as we look at budget deliberations and what we need to do. And that was certainly the, the purpose of it.
Mr. Dino, are there any other comments with respect to the consent agenda? Seeing none, I think we are aware of what the motion was. So I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. That also carries. With that, I have a motion to move into closed, moved by Councillor Post, seconded by Councillor Gordon, that the contents of the regular council with closed session agenda for February 17th to be approved. Sorry, the approval of the agenda. Any comments around the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. That carries. And now we have the motion to move into closed, which is moved by Councillor McGinn and seconded by Councillor Main, that the council resolved to the committee, the whole, again, all those in favor. Thank you very much. And that carries. So over to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worship. Welcome, everyone. This evening we have no presentations, but we do have two deputations. The first one coming from Waypoint Center, update on the COVID-19 community relief efforts and information on the youth wellness hub. I'd like to welcome Ms. Lambie, President and CEO of Waypoint to present. Ms. Lambie, thank you very much for coming. Hope you're doing well and enjoying all the snow we're getting.
I think my husband's enjoying it less than I am even. Thank you very much, your worship, members of council, for the opportunity to just provide an update this evening on sort of activities at Waypoint. And I'm assuming that you have the slide deck, so.
And I'll ask if we can keep to 10 minutes. That'd be wonderful. And, and we, please stick around. We'll have some questions for you after.
All right. We'll do my best. So some of you may know more about Waypoint and others, just a quick overview. Waypoint is a specialty mental health hospital, just over 300 beds and serving the region up north as far as Perry Sound to the west to Dufferin County. And also just about half of those beds are the province's only high-secure forensic mental health program for serving only adult males. We also have outpatient and community programs. We have the Waypoint Research Institute. Somewhere between 1,200 and 1,300 staff with a whole variety of clinicians as well as other support staff. And with an annual budget of just over $150 million and many staff living locally, we are a substantial economic driver in the region. And then I'm turning to the next slide, whoever is controlling that somewhere behind the curtain. All of presentations around healthcare these days certainly are talking about the COVID pandemic. I think we all know that mental health is a very important part of our overall health. And I'm sure you've all heard the statistic, the one in five number have experienced mental health challenges. But you can see from the statistics on this slide that that was our sort of baseline. And now we've got 40% of Canadians saying their mental health has deteriorated since March 2020, the beginning, sort of onset of the pandemic. Youth are impacted, social isolation and working at home certainly factors. There's really no facet of our lives that's been untouched by the pandemic. And so in seeing increasing cases of anxiety and depression. And then also addiction. So the bottom two statistics relating to overdose rates as well as consumption of alcohol. So how are we responding to COVID-19? Onto the next slide. Thank you. As a hospital, we've been part of the overall hospital system planning to respond to COVID. And we've also, as a hospital, had to plan and respond to the pandemic ourselves to ensure that public health and infection prevention and control measures are in place to keep both our patients and our staff safe. I'm sure you can imagine the government directives, public health advice and recommendations have been coming fast and furious to us. have been coming fast and furious to us over the past year. And as more is learned about the virus, those directives and directions to us change. We've been very fortunate that we had the physical space to be able to create an isolation unit. Not all hospitals have had that ability, but all of our new admissions go into that unit and they can be tested and screened for COVID before they would move to the unit that they were heading for. We have, like all of our other hospital partners, suspended visits. We're screening everyone who does come into the building. We have many staff working from home. And one of the things, we heard someone talking earlier around innovation and creativity coming out of COVID. We've seen a tremendous use in virtual care and also use of technology. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. Certainly, we appreciate how hard our staff have been working over this past year. The compassionate care that they deliver to our patients, our clients in the community and families, even under these very challenging circumstances, is really nothing short of inspiring. And we thank them every day for the care that they bring to our clients. We have, as you would know from the media, and onto the next slide, thank you. We've had two outbreaks at Waypoint. One, on our Awenda program, which is one of the provincial forensic programs, and currently in outbreak on our Horizon program, which is our seniors geriatric program. We're very fortunate, healthcare providers and seniors residents primarily of long-term care and retirement homes have been able to receive the vaccination. So we've had nearly half of our staff be vaccinated. And some of our patients are geriatric patients as well as some longer stay patients. We're hoping to have the remainder vaccinated in the next tranche as supply becomes available. It's very important for us to be caring for the caregivers. So we're making sure that we're supporting our staff as well as our patients with coping and wellness support related to the pandemic. And so as a mental health provider, we have internal resources that we're using for this. We have a traumatic incident support team, a very robust employee wellness program, mindfulness programs, and a spiritual care team that is able to provide support. We also recognize it's important to be in regular communication with our staff and patients and families and all other stakeholders. And so we've been posting updates regularly on our website. So on to the next slide, just before the pandemic, when every, sort of everything in our lives changed. Waypoint had just launched our brand new strategic plan with the strategic directions of serve, discover, and lead. So I thought I would just touch on a few things, and some of these are also related to COVID, but under the heading of each of our strategic directions. So certainly underserve, we're making sure that we are playing our role in the healthcare system, talking about the need for mental health services. We have been planning for surge and adding bed capacity. And we're also looking at what we're learning as we go through this pandemic. All hospitals would have had pandemic plans. We did. But certainly, there's nothing like living through one to update and provide quality improvement on the plan that you have, and we have done that. We are supporting system capacity. So we've added two new medical directors, one around family, children and youth, Dr. Rob Meter, and the other is yet to come. He, we've recruited, he and his wife both coming to the area in the next few months. And he will be our Director of Community Care. Also, a huge thank you to the Town of Midland and the County of Simcoe as well for being a wonderful partner in order to see the community health hub come to fruition. It was a long time in the planning and a long time in the building, but we got it done. Unfortunately, with COVID, we weren't able to celebrate the opening as we would have liked to or see it as a wonderful physical gathering place that it will become, I'm sure. But we were really pleased to be able to get that completed. One of the things around about healthcare is it's important to make sure that you are providing evidence-based care to be able to provide the best outcomes for your clients. And so one of our quality improvement initiatives, which is a provincial one, is providing cognitive behavioral therapy for psychosis and family intervention to our patients and families. We're also, we're also ensuring, as I mentioned earlier, our employee health, safety and wellness. And so we are, we do have a psychologically healthy workplace plan that we're in about probably year four of implementation of. And we've recently partnered with Yale to, we've undertaken a survey on staff engagement and burnout and are just working through implementing initiatives that will address the results of that. I did mention earlier, talking about using technology. And I just wanted to use as an example of serve, one of the initiatives that our specialized geriatric services leaders have been implementing and looking at connectivity and long-term care. It really is just heartwarming. We know that digital technology doesn't replace human touch. But it can really help residents feel less isolated. And certainly, that is one of the factors that we've considered during this pandemic over the last year. And there have been stories of an elderly man who now playing guitar music on the technology, but also playing his guitar, which he had not been doing. And a woman who was non-verbal, only spoke Korean, that was her, that was her native tongue. And they started playing music and movies in Korean for her, and she became alert and awake and making sounds. So really, just some great stories of being innovative during the pandemic. In terms of discover, I mentioned our research institute, which has been around for about 40 years. But certainly, we're continuing to build and do work on that, building on that front. We're doing research related to the pandemic. One of them is Stop COVID Project. And it's studying our pandemic response to make improvements, again, a quality improvement initiative as we go through. We're also in partnership with Georgian College undertaking an ECHO study. And you can see on the screen there what that stands for. And it is, it is about looking at a mindfulness program, providing that for four weeks and comparing that four-week version to the longer, to the longer version and hoping that the effects are similar because then we will be able to provide that program to many more people. The longer version is three months. So you can see information about that on our website and register there if anyone's interested or share that with others. We do have a new Director of Research starting with us on March the first. His name is Christopher Canning, and he is a leader in research in Canada. Previously has been at the Mental Health Commission of Canada and also worked in international mental health context. So we're really pleased to have him come to us. And we're currently recruiting in partnership with the University of Toronto, a chair position in forensic mental health research to continue to build on our leadership role in forensic mental health. And then on to lead, last slide. Many of you may have heard of Ontario Health Teams, and certainly there are quite a number of them across the province. There's one locally for North Simcoe. We are leader in the Central Ontario, Ontario Health Team for Specialized Populations. And it supports a broader region. North Simcoe would be one of the OHTs that we would partner with. And the intent here is there's just not enough specialists that every Ontario Health Team could have, all the specialists that they need. And so in partnership, we would provide specialist service to other Ontario Health Teams and their patients and clients that they are caring for. We've also been a leader, one of four hospitals, running a demonstration project for the last three or four years on Ontario Structured Psychotherapy. It is one of the flagship programs of the provincial government's Mental Health and Addiction Strategic Plan. And that pilot program was very successful, and it is currently now being expanded to cover right across the province. We did move, I'm not sure if the sign's up there yet, but we did move some of our folks providing structured psychotherapy to offices on Jones Road in Midland. And then lastly, I've mentioned several times that we're supporting healthcare workers, not only our own, but across the province. We're one of five hospitals in total, providing a COVID frontline wellness. And so this is for frontline workers can access this. And it is done virtually and very, very needed for healthcare workers who, after a year of working in a pandemic, are really very much needing support. So with that, I hope I didn't go beyond my time. Thank you for making mental health a priority and really appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you about the work that we're doing.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Lambie. And please stick around. I believe we may have a few questions from council. Council, any questions with regards to Ms. Lambie's presentation? I see Beth, councillor Prost, and I'll go to councillor Mayne.
Thank you for your presentation. That was very informative. But I do have a question. How's the youth hub managing through the pandemic?
Well, like everything else we're doing, they're doing things in a different way. Some good news, though, it was a demonstration or a pilot project as well, and we only had funding for that for three years. It's been confirmed, again, as part of the provincial Strategic Mental Health and Addictions Plan, we will have ongoing funding. And so they have, and youth, of course, from my vantage of greater years than youth, youth are very much used to doing things digitally. And so that is what they've done. They've got a lot of virtual programs, lots of activities. They've got a monthly calendar every month that outlines what is available. And they've been reaching out and making connections through schools as well. So they've had to modify what it is they're doing and how they're doing it. But the good news is there's ongoing funding, so that will continue. And, you know, as we move out of the pandemic, they'll look at more probably traditional methods of providing care. But it is, I'm not sure how much you know about it, but it is beyond providing service in mental health and addictions or substance use. There's also primary care. So we're funded for a nurse practitioner, housing, education, employment, peer support. So it really is a wraparound service. So we're thrilled that we've got ongoing funding for it.
That's great to hear. I'm glad to hear that. Pre-pandemic, I'd been there a few times, and it's a fantastic program. I'm glad to see it's still around.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
What's our main?
Thank you. My point was, it was the same about the youth hub. I just want to make a quick comment. I was speaking to a high school teacher today who made note that the youth are really struggling and anything that we can do to give them some recreation, you know, we're talking, a lot of people are emailing us about the rec center. And the question, I guess, for the youth hub is, is there a way to ramp up programming? I know you said that the youth hub has connected with the high schools. That's excellent. It just, there's just a lack of, you know, something to do. And as you're saying, we're increasing digital programming. And I think people are kind of getting to the point where they're getting a bit of COVID fatigue, of digital fatigue, you know, staring at screens all day long. So I very much appreciate all the efforts, especially the youth hub. It's just a great, we've got a little tour of it. It's fantastic. But I guess further to that, I guess it's just dependent on funding. The youth hub is reliant on funding?
Well, as I said, councillor Mayne, we were really thrilled to find out. This was, there were, I think, 10 youth hubs across the province. And we submitted an application, and we were thrilled to be one of the pilot sites chosen. Initially, those hubs were funded for 10, 10 years, 10 hubs, three years. And that funding was running out. So in the provincial plan, youth wellness hubs is another one of their foundational programs. And we will receive, beginning April 1st, ongoing funding for the hub. So it's not so much conditional on funding. I mean, we'll have to live within that budget. But it's conditional, you know, being able to do things other than virtually. So, you know, as you recall, schools were closed and then everything was shut down. And then, so they've been trying to roll with what they can do in terms of the COVID restrictions. I would just like to, I would just like to say that, you know, Waypoint is the lead, has been the lead organization for the hub, but there's many, many partners involved in the hub. New Path and CMHA, Chigamick, our Patient, Client and Family Council, Youth Haven. So Girls and Boys Club, a lot of partners working together to reach the youth.
Wonderful. Any other questions? Councillor Gordon?
Thanks for your presentation, Carol. It's always nice to see you. I just had a quick question for you. And for those of you who don't understand why I'm going to ask this. I worked at Waypoint as a contractor weekly within the forensic unit with, you know, some of the people that have spent their entire adult lives there, watched them come and go. Some people died, some people got released, some people released and came back. But long story short, as I formed a bit of a therapeutic alliance, if you will, while doing the technical work that I was doing one-on-one with the patients. And I'm just, this year, obviously, I haven't done it. The contract ended after 20 years and the pandemic kicked in. But I just, I never even got to say goodbye to anybody there. And if any of them are watching, I just wanted to say, you know, thanks for the memories and hope everyone's doing well. But Carol, the question to you is, how has the forensic units fared with COVID-19? From what I'm seeing on the papers, it looks like they've been spared thus far. Just wondering if any of the people that I knew and worked with for the years are doing okay.
We did have a smaller outbreak on one of the provincial forensic programs, Awenda. There were two patients and two staff. I'm pleased to say all have recovered.
That's great. Well, if you could, next time you're doing the walk in the floors, maybe just say hi to me or hi from me to the usual suspects, you'll know who I'm talking about.
Yes, and thanks very much for all of your service. I know the patients really appreciated that work.
So I do, I do miss them anyway, thinking about them all.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gordon. Mayor Strathairn?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Earlier, it was mentioned, you mentioned, Carol, the North Simcoe Ontario Health Team. I know that there's been a lot of work towards create the creation of that. And I'm just wondering, is it now an actual health, Ontario Health Team, or are we still in the approvals process? And your role in that?
Okay, you may be talking about the North Simcoe Ontario Health Team. And the lead organizations in that are Georgian Bay General Hospital, Chigamick and Wenda Family Health Team. I do also sit on that steering committee for that Ontario Health Team. And they are working through the various stages of the process of their application. The Ontario Health Team that Waypoint leads is actually recognized as an innovative model in the province. And it's intended to serve a much greater geography and also support multiple Ontario Health Teams. So we work with Ontario Health, the one in North Simcoe, but also Berry, Aurelia, Muskoka. I'm sure I'm missing some, and then some to the south as well. So the Ontario Health Teams for the more local geography like North Simcoe, Muskoka, or North Simcoe is intended to integrate primary care, so family health team, home and community care and hospital care. Whereas the one that we are leading is providing specialized services. So for example, again, children and youth, we have, our medical director works with the primary care physician. So for example, again, children and youth, we have, our medical director works with the primary care physicians. And what they do is look at, it's called a step care model of care. So that the first level of care, primary care would be provided by youth family physician. But if they need specialized care, then Dr. Meter would either provide some advice and counsel to the primary care physician, or provide some care to the client and then transfer the client back to the family, family physician. So it's working in tandem with those multiple Ontario Health Teams. So I don't know if that helps.
Does. Thank, thank you. And it's nice to see the reach that you have across multiplicity of health teams. Speaks volumes of the value of the institution and your people.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I see none. Thank you very much, Waypoint and Ms. Lambie for coming this evening. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much. Always appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Have a good evening. All right, next up on the agenda, we have a, sorry, apologize. A petition from Midland Point Road Speed Reduction. I believe we have Mr. Pui, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that is correct.
Mr. Pui, I thank you for coming this evening. I'll remind you that you have 10 minutes. And please stick around. We may have a couple of questions with regards to your presentation after.
Perfect.
Thank you for coming. It's all yours. The floor is yours.
Can you hear me well?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Excellent. So I first want to thank you for welcoming here, me here tonight. So my name is Carly DePuy, and I have lived on Midland Point Road for about six and a half years now. Through most of this time, the speed of traffic on our road has been a common discussion in the neighborhood. And we're in an active community that spends a lot of time walking, biking and accessing the trails that are connected to our road. On behalf of myself and the residents who have signed my petition, we are requesting to have the Midland Point Road speed limit reduced from 50 kilometers an hour down to a reduced speed limit of 40 kilometers an hour between Fuller Avenue up to and including 764 Midland Point Road. We feel that this is the most effective solution to reducing the speed of traffic on our road. I did not include the section past 764 Midland Point Road in my petition. But I did have residents on that section reach out to me that they would like it mentioned, that they are not sure why the speed limit had to increase to 60 kilometers further down the road near Glenbrook Drive, and they would like to also see that reduced to 50 kilometers an hour. So the petition that I presented to my neighbors reads, "We, the residents of Midland Point Road, do hereby petition the city of Midland to reduce the existing speed limit of 50 kilometers per hour to 40 kilometers per hour from Fuller Avenue up to including 764 Midland Point Road." Petition includes the signatures of the residents who reside on the section of road in question. Members from 31 out of 37 households on Midland Point Road in the section that we're discussing have signed the petition. This house is missing or either due to households in the moving process, or I was unable to contact them. Making support for this request virtually unanimous. I only reached out to residents on this particular section of road, but we did have additional signatures due to some local residents in the area having heard about the petition and just having a special interest in wanting to be included. So 52 residents in total have signed the petition. The residents who have signed are in consensus that the speed of traffic on Midland Point Road can be excessive and dangerous. The annual average daily traffic on Midland Point Road was most recently documented at 800 to 1,200 vehicles per day. And obviously, the closer to Fuller Avenue you get, the higher that number is. And also, this is also increased in the summer months with seasonal residents. The speed control problem on Midland Point Road has been a chronic problem. The more I have spoken to my neighbors, I've realized that this has been an ongoing concern for at least 50 years. We feel that 50 kilometers an hour is too fast, especially because most vehicles on this section of road travel well in excess of the speed limit. Our road is a long straight stretch of road, making it tempting for motorists to push the speed limit, followed by a fairly sharp curve in the hill, on a hill that many motorists don't reduce their speed while navigating. Many residents have reported the speed concerns to the OPP to attempt to increase police presence in the area, but this does not seem to help the problem. The gravel shoulders on Midland Point Road are currently poor and in many areas degrading, making it hazardous for pedestrians to walk on them, leaving us often to walk on the roadway. And even with potential infrastructure improvements to Midland Point Road, this will not reduce the speed of traffic. The curve on the road just past Portage Park Lane creates difficulties in residents entering and exiting the driveways due to speeding traffic. This was described to me many times as dangerous. Residents turning onto Midland Point Road from Portage Park Lane, so making a left-hand turn, have expressed that this can also be, and I quote, "dangerous" trying to get out of Portage Park Lane, especially with the hill on your right-hand side as you enter Midland Point Road. Cars come flying over the hill and they're on you before you know it. Common feedback that has been reducing the speed limit is long overdue and that there's concern for the safety of children, pedestrians and pets. The residents are concerned that someone will seriously get hurt if the problem is not addressed. There have been many comments about cars leaving the roadway due to speed and weather, also about pets being hit by vehicles. I've heard stories of elderly residents driving and using their cars to visit with direct neighbors across the road from them in fear of not being able to cross the road in time on foot safely. Some residents up on the corner on Midland Point Road also shovel paths between their houses so that they don't have to navigate the roadway on foot in fear of it not being safe. While reducing the speed limit may, may not fully solve the problem, the consensus that is that if the speed limit is reduced by 10 kilometers an hour, hopefully the honest drivers will also follow this and, and hopefully the individuals that are speeding will reduce their speed accordingly by 10 kilometers an hour. The neighborhood has changed, especially recently. There are much more young families with children in the neighborhood playing, walking and accessing the school bus stops. The majority of traffic on our road is residents, delivery services and casual drivers. It's also good to mention that the town of Midland cares for and promotes Golly Park, making it not just the immediate residents in our neighborhood that access the park and trails. The flow of traffic needs to not only support the safety of the immediate residents, but also the people that use the area for leisure and recreation. Often residents use the section of Midland Point Road between Fuller and Portage Park to complete a loop when we're walking through the trails to Golly Park. So our roads need to be safe. I have a personal interest in this matter because I have a family with two young boys. We go out walking on a daily basis, trying to navigate a stroller on the road is a challenge at best. I want this wonderful community that I'm proud to be a part of, to feel safer for both myself and my boys. The speed traffic is not just an occasional concern on our road. You just have to spend a couple of minutes on the road to recognize that it's a serious problem. It's not uncommon to see vehicles traveling at least 80 kilometers down, an hour down our road. That's most of everything. I did provide another copy of all of this to, I think, most of you, including the petition and a few comments from residents with, which I think I mostly covered. So I want to take just this time to thank you for considering this request and in reducing the speed limits to hopefully to 40 kilometers an hour from Fuller to 764 Midland Point Road. And I hope that we can come to a solution to improve the safety in the neighborhood. And I hope to look, hearing your thoughts. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pui. It's never easy coming to council, but I want to give you credit. Great presentation and good for you for getting all your neighbors to sign the petition. I gotta congratulate you on that and you did a great job. So please stick around for a few questions. I see Counselor Ocheski, Counselor May, and then I'll go to Counselor Cunningham. And we may have a few other questions for you, so don't leave yet. Ocheski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, great presentation, great petition. I'm not sure if you saw the Lakewood Drive petition that went through.
Yes.
Yeah, we're right at the end of Midland Point Road and we were successful in getting the 40 kilometer an hour change done, so that's great. Since, since that, even during this meeting, I had another resident traffic concern and I asked them to tune in. So hopefully that resident's watching as well. Like from earlier in the meeting, we have a, well, we definitely do have a traffic calming study coming to council. And it was heard earlier that there's six items on, on the list of things to be looked at. So I think this is a great one to add, not that there's no sense of urgency to, yes, we got seven now. So not that there's no sense of urgency, you know, we could certainly draft a motion tonight to make this happen. But I think if we do that, we'll have another street tomorrow and another street in a week. While I do support this, and I'm certainly sensitive to your family, I drive the street at least twice a day. And I do need it to be stroller ready in five months when I'll be pushing a stroller as well. So I certainly support this and thank you so much for bringing this to council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ocheski. And maybe Midland could be the second community in Ontario to switch their whole township to 40 kilometers an hour. Maybe something to consider. And I'd like to, maybe we need a motion to bring that forward at some point. Counselor May?
Thank you so much. Yeah, my parents still live on Glenbrook. I grew up ripping up and down Midland Point. And I think it must have been the 90s when it was 60 in the entire corridor. And I believe the first portion was dropped down to 50. I think it might have been the late 90s, early 2000s. And I think this issue is really kind of, is a leftover issue because the number one predominant determinant of speed is the lane width. And so Midland Point is a rural-built township road. It's, and, but now we have a built-up residential area, now it's a residential neighborhood. But you have an old-style country road that rips right through a neighborhood and there's no sidewalks, as you mentioned. So paved shoulders, bike lanes and stuff like that would be very helpful. But really, at the end of the day, if you have wide lanes, you're going to have high speeds. So thank you very much for bringing this forward. And, you know, the tricky thing is too, is like, you gotta move cars and everyone wants to go as fast as they can. And, but there is definitely, you've proven a neighborhood interest in reducing the speeds. And so that always carries more weight is when the neighborhood comes forward and says, this is not safe and we're not comfortable. And I think that those are two actually separate things, safety and comfort. And so we have, I think you've mentioned 800 to 1,200 cars. And that's actually quite manageable because if this is a slow numbers of street, then these types of awareness activities might actually help. You know, just with a few signs, but really you have to kind of do everything with traffic stuff. You gotta do a little bit of signage, you gotta, you know, write the letter to the newspaper, you gotta do the deputation to council. And then you gotta, then you have us to look into it. And then we also have the policing component for enforcement off of really unsafe drivers. So there's a lot of it and traffic and transportation, it certainly gets my gears going. And so you always have my support for transportation matters. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Cunningham?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I also want to thank you for coming to council with this, Ms. Dupuy, and for doing so much work. There is a lot of putting yourself out there to go and talk to your neighbors and reach out to make a change. So I want to congratulate you on doing that and remind people that, you know, Ward 3 is town of Midland and with no sidewalks. And so anything that we can do to make this in-town roads, these in-town roads that have no sidewalks safer for the needs of pedestrians, I think we need to hear those. And the fact that you're open to traffic calming and bringing that forward, that, you know, sometimes that's a question, well, what will happen? Will people be upset that you've done that work for us? Say, no, people will be quite thrilled. And thank you so much for doing that work. And I'm so glad you've got the new link to come in and join us during the meeting. The other link had expired.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Downer? Sorry, Counselor Downer, you're still muted. You're still?
Holding the spacebar works sometimes.
Try to hit maybe the spacebar. Oh, we got a boss coming in. Can we unmute him? Unmute Counselor Downer on our end, Madam Clerk?
I've actually been sending, trying, asking him to unmute and usually there's a pop-up. Counselor Downer, it's in the bottom right-hand or left-hand corner. Are you able to click on that?
Thank you very much. Sorry about that.
No problem.
I'm just wondering, you know, this, this problem isn't unique to Midland Point Road and it just seems to be growing. And I don't know, does the OPP still have a traffic division? Does anybody know, members on our, our board? Can you answer that for me?
Yeah, I believe they do. Yes, sir.
Well, why aren't we, why aren't we involving these people in enforcement?
It'll definitely, definitely.
If we reduce this area to 40 kilometers, you can look at the whole town coming to us because I'm hearing complaints, not just from Midland Point Road, Fourth Street, other streets in town are having the same issue and it seems to be growing. And it doesn't seem to be getting any better. So maybe we have to, we have to lean on our police service a little bit here to do some enforcement. Thank you.
Well said, Counselor Downer. I have Counselor McGinn, then I'll go to your worship.
So I think it's multiple things. First, I really want to thank you for coming. I really would like to thank you to what Counselor Cunningham was saying. It takes a lot of work, a lot of effort and a lot of dedication. So thank you for doing that for us, for your community and for people who don't necessarily live in Ward 3. I really appreciate that. I think there's a couple of, I support this 100% and to what, what Deputy Mayor Ross had, Deputy Mayor Ross had said. Yes, wouldn't that be something else, something fantastic if we all, if we just, you know, became another community that said, no, it's 40. And I think that would be amazing. But the, the issue isn't only the speed limit, it's part of it. I mean, a 10, a 10 kilometer per hour reduction in speed for people who abide by the law. And then accidents do sometimes happen, can make a huge difference. So then, you know, the education part is another portion of it. Getting the OPP involved is another portion of it. And that's, that's our responsibility. And I'm really looking forward to, to talking about that. And, you know, there are now seven things coming, coming up. So your timing is absolutely fantastic.
Great, thank you. Now I have to find my mute button. It's not here.
Your worship. And then I'll have Counselor Gordon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So to Counselor Downer's question, yes, there's a motor vehicles group. And yes, they are running speed traps. And yes, they're getting convictions and writing tickets, citations. One of the things I do notice is that when they set a trap up, it's not very long before drivers are flashing your lights. You might just as well pick up your, your car and move because effectiveness just doesn't, doesn't, isn't there anymore. And I see that all the time when I'm driving home. I drive Midland Point Road every day. And what I, what I encounter on Midland Point Road is two things in particular. Aside from the fact that it's a subdivision that was built under the township guidelines and there are ditches there and, and then, and open ditches, which really limit the provision of sidewalks. Or, or you put the sidewalks, you just go in on to people's, you know, you put it in on people's front lines. It's one way, it's one way or the other. So that creates a problem for pedestrians. I've seen that, but I also see pedestrians creating a problem in that they won't move over. No matter, you know, you're driving along, there's a car coming the other way, you slow down and try to get them to move. And you get some rather rude gestures. And, and so it's a bit of a two-way street here. But one thing I do know is that there are people who drive that road who are consistently speeding, same offenders all the time. And it would be nice if people could get a license plate and report that plate to the OPP. I personally, for the last two days, that I've driven the road because of weather and lockdown, of taking it down to 40 kilometers an hour. It doesn't add a lot to the, to the drive. And I actually get to look and see what's going on in the neighborhood. So that's kind of nice. So personally, I, I would support in at least and some, some way of reducing the speed limit. I'm not sure how effective that's going to be to, to your earlier point. You may get people going from 60 or 70 down to 50 or 60 now.
Right.
But I would ask the pedestrians to be a little more cognizant of the fact that you are walking on a road with no sidewalks. And sometimes there is no And sometimes there is no option but to, I can't pull over. If I can, I pull over in the other lane. Sometimes I can't. And then I, then, then, then it gets interesting, some of the gestures you get from people that look like you're crackers or something. But I think it's, I think to everybody else's point, thank you for bringing it forward. It is something that's been going on for some time. I know the OPP are aware of some of these hot points. Fuller Avenue is another one. You think about those folks that you drive into town on the west side of the road, trying to pull it onto Fuller Avenue. People are going through there at eighty, eighty-five, ninety kilometers an hour because they're either late for work or they're in a hurry to go home because they got to pick the kids up. It's a bit, it's a problem and it's a psychological problem. I think it's got more to do with people's attitude. People are becoming just, as a consequence of COVID, they're becoming rude, they're becoming rude to their neighbors. And it's very unfortunate. So I guess, I guess we'll just have to look at how we're going to slow that down. And I think Counselor Downer is right. We are going to get a lot of requests to slow down the whole town if we keep going this way. And we will bring it up with Inspector Evans again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, your worship. Counselor Gordon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dupree, for coming and doing this. You know, we asked for it basically when, when we got the Lakewood Drive deputation. And I'm constantly urging people to come and do these deputations. I appreciate an email or a petition sent to us and included on the CIP. But nothing is more compelling than having somebody who's passionate about the issue come and talk to us and have us ask questions of you. So again, kudos for being brave enough to do this. It does take some bravery because, you know, it's kind of, you're on TV and there's a bunch of us. You did, you did a great job on the letter. It was very compelling. I'm inclined to support forty kilometers an hour reduction all throughout the town. It's more of, it's a symbolic thing. It is going to keep the legal people driving slower. The people that just don't care, that don't care now are still going to drive fast. They don't care. However, forty reduction across town does send the message that, you know, that first of all, it's going to cost you more if you get a speeding ticket. And I don't see any reason why not to, not to support this. In the meantime, like that's a longer ask because we haven't even had that bigger discussion. I doubt, well, maybe perhaps after this, part of that traffic calming report will include the option of reducing forty, you know, car blocks across the town. That's part of the equation, as everyone else has said, policing, honestly, nothing, you know, curbs the weight on your foot, like getting pulled over and getting a ticket. Yeah, I know there's ways and people flashlights. That's been going on since the beginning of time though. All you do is you don't put your regular marked police car out doing radar, you know, you go the unmarked car. You don't have to park sideways or one sees. And the only time you're, you're give away your position is when you lit someone up and you're writing up a ticket and you go somewhere else. Another option for us is mobile photo radar, you know, that's a spend. We may be able to get some, yeah, I know, I saw, I get it. It is. There may be some grant money for that, maybe, I don't know. But it's one of those things where the, the driver of the car doesn't get the ticket, doesn't have demerit points. It basically goes to the owner of the car and it's just a fine. But that money does, if we, we run it, a lot of it streams in the municipality. So I'd be supportive of that, at least looking and seeing what it costs. I know other big, bigger municipalities, it could be something we go in and with our, our three other neighbors and share the cost by having it spread around. We do also have that speed trailer that I, you know, I can't really keep, that's like a broken record. Plow it a little place and deploy the speed trailer for heaven's sake. I know it's winter, but, you know, and I know it snows, but there's got to be places we can put that. And it'll actually measure the, count the cars, measure the speeds and allow us and Mr. Campbell and his report to give us some evidence in the recommendation. So I really would like to see the speed trailer reminding people. And I'm also going to be asking for smaller speed signs that are pole mounted. But I, so I appreciate all of your concerns. I do support them. If the report comes and recommends or even doesn't recommend, the report comes to us now that you're added on to the, the list. I will definitely support a speed reduction on your street, but I think we do need to look at this more holistically. Because otherwise it will be just street after street after street, neighborhood after neighborhood coming, as they should. And we can either deal with this piecemeal or we can just, you know, tear the bandaid off and, and try and put a solution in for the town. So it's a blended approach. Thank you for coming tonight. I support your request wholeheartedly. I'm sad that there isn't a motion right now for us to deal with, but I do agree that because this report's forthcoming, your message was well received by my peers and I fully expect it to form part of the report when it does come in the, you know, next couple of months. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gordon. Any other questions or comments? Counselor, sorry, your worship.
Just a comment and I'll share this with Mr. Counselor Gordon after, if I figure out where I filed it. But there was a report done by Springwater Township, a mobile radar unit is three hundred thousand dollars plus a bunch of membership fees to a data brokerage consortium about its city of Toronto. So it's, it's quite, it's quite, if we're looking at doing this, I agree with you, we're looking at our neighbors as well for that, that sort of thing. Because it's, and the, and the fixed units are even more expensive. So Springwater looked at it and they threw their hands up and decided they'd back away from it. So I thought there was a motion around this somewhere.
I don't, I don't have a motion. Sorry. I know. Counselor Cunningham.
Yes, thank you. So I did prepare a motion for tonight that essentially is probably going to end up just saying, yes, please include this in the March report. But the motion that I prepared was that further to the email dated January ten, twenty twenty-one from Ms. Carly Dupree and the related petition requesting a reduction in speed limit on Midland Point Road. Staff be directed to investigate and bring forward a report with recommendations to a future council meeting for consideration. Now, what I'm hearing from Mr. Campbell this evening is that motion really isn't necessary as long as I think we are expressing our desire for this item to be included. So if we could just check that with Mr. Campbell, then that's about the extent of what we can do with a motion arising in this fashion.
I have quite confidence that staff has heard us loud and clear, but we will allow Mr. Campbell to answer the question. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, we will include, this is part of the discussion of that report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. And congratulations, Mr. Dupree. You, I believe you accomplished what you were looking to come to council for. You got us talking about it. We're going to have a report come back to council with more discussion. So thank you so much for your time for coming today and we greatly appreciate, great, great, greatly appreciate your coming with the petition. And hopefully we'll get the results that you're looking for.
Thank you so much for having me tonight.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciate it. All the best to you and your family.
Thank you.
All right, next up, council, we have a public meeting with regards to a bylaw amendment at seven, sorry, one seventy-four Pillsbury Drive. And I will call this public meeting to order. This public meeting is being held under the Planning Act to consider an application for proposed amendment to the zoning, town zoning bylaw respecting one seventy-four Pillsbury Drive. In accordance with the Planning Act, if a person does not make an oral submission at the public meeting or make written submission before the bylaw is passed or approval given, you may not be entitled to appeal the decision at the local planning appeal tribunal. You may not be added as a party to the hearing on the appeal to the LPAT unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. The purpose of this public meeting is to hear from residents and to seek clarity on the application. Council is not making a decision on the application or taking a position. Staff will report back in the future with a recommendations report. This is the opportunity to speak and council encourages you to do so. I will now ask the town manager of planning, Candace Bonderchuk, to introduce the application, the applicant and confirm that any notification or correspondence was received.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, your worship, Deputy Mayor, members of council and the public for tuning into tonight's public meeting presentation. And I'll ask Sherry to bring up the presentation now, please.
Now, could you confirm if any, if we received any correspondence?
I certainly will, Deputy Mayor Ross.
Thank you.
The application before us tonight is for a zoning bylaw amendment under section thirty-four of the Planning Act and temporary use bylaw under section thirty-nine of the Planning Act at the location municipally addressed as one seventy-four Pillsbury Drive. Next slide, please. This is the public meeting notice as Deputy Mayor Ross requested in accordance with the Planning Act. Notice of complete application and public meeting was provided. And this public meeting affords the public an opportunity to provide comments to be taken into consideration by council and staff. The notices were circulated to residents within a hundred and twenty meter radius, published in the local newspaper and online. Next slide, please. This is an aerial map. On the left-hand side is the spring of twenty eighteen aerial photograph. It provides an overview of the context of the surrounding lands, essentially for councils reviewing for the public. You can see there to the north would be the residential component and the surrounding lands are mostly vacant to the south. Industrial lands, woodlot, as well as the, everyone's familiar, of course, with Mom's Restaurant. And then there's the industrial building just to the west there as well. There's also a zoomed in version on the right-hand side to provide an indication on the location of the current parking and the existing industrial building. Next slide, slide, please. This one to provide council with the street view perspective, which conveys the location of the existing built industrial form on the west side of the proposed subject lands. So you can see also the tree woodlot to the south. Next slide, please. And this is the street view perspective of the existing building, which is subject to the zoning bylaw amendment and temporary use for a childcare facility at one seventy-four Pillsbury Drive. Next slide. This is the current official plan designation. So it is employment area and there is residential district to the west. Next slide. Under the town zoning bylaw, the site is zone currently M one, which permits an array of industrial uses. It does not, however, permit specifically a childcare center as defined in the zoning bylaw. However, the new official plan does speak to supportive and in, in ancillary or accessory uses that would complement employment lands such as gyms, childcare centers. And perhaps this is something we will need to review further during the impending zoning bylaw conformity exercise once the new official plan is in full force of effect. Next slide. This is the site plan, which shows thirteen existing parking spaces and accessible space, the general location of the temporary outdoor play area, which includes chain link fencing, bullards to ensure safety is maintained. Next slide. We don't see a whole lot of temporary use bylaws, and I'm not sure if council here has received many in the past. But I want to provide an overview of what a temporary use bylaw is. So it's basically, it's when an applicant wants to develop their property in a way that's not specifically permitted in the zoning bylaw. It allows for a temporary mechanism to allow or permit use, in this case, a childcare center for a maximum of three years, at which time the applicant can come forth at the end of the three years and request an extension. Next slide. We did receive public comments, and this is from the owner Kevin Canal, who's to the east of the subject lands. He's at one sixty-nine Pillsbury Drive, and he is requesting that a fence be erected between the two properties the entire length of the property line for safety purposes. Mr. Brian McCall is the agent on behalf of the owner and he is in attendance tonight. He will not be providing a presentation this evening, but is present and would be happy to answer any questions that council may have. So thank you, your worship and council. That concludes the presentation from planning services, and I turn it back to Deputy Mayor Ross.
Thank you very much for your presentation. So I mentioned I was to extend an invitation to the applicant or agent to make a presentation, but you're saying they have nothing to provide. Is that correct?
For your worship to Deputy Mayor Ross, that's correct. But Mr. McCall is here to speak if council has any questions.
Wonderful. Welcome, Mr. McCall. Thank you for coming this evening. Now I will open the meeting to comments from the public. Anyone wishing to comment may call the clerk at seven oh five, five two six, four two seven five, extension two two oh eight. The number is also being displayed by Rogers Television for those watching. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody that's called in?
No, I do not have anyone at this point.
Wonderful. It's a last call to anyone with regards to application for one seventy-four Pillsbury Drive. I see none. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
This is Ron Coons. Brian McCall is having trouble making the Zoom connection.
Yeah, Ron, I'm on.
Oh, go ahead, Brian. Sorry.
I'm, I'm not sure if they want to hear anything from us tonight. We're here to answer questions. Apologize. Thanks for coming, gentlemen. Unfortunately, I don't see that we have any questions at this time. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Not that I'm aware of, no, unless council does have some questions.
Counselor Maine, and then I'll go to Counselor Gordon, and we'll bring this public meeting to a close.
Thank you so much. Ms. Bonderchuk, very great to put a face to a name and it's good to have Mr. McCall back with us. We got some planning superstars with us tonight, all for just a minor matter, which is simply adding a temporary use of daycare at one facility. Two questions. So temporary use, three years, then we'd have, do they have to renew? Or I, this is new for us for temporarys, so I guess they'd have to request again. And the second question would be, would daycare, daycare be in appropriate use for employment areas under the, our current official plan? Thank you.
Mr. McCall, you care to answer or would you, would turn that over to our planner? Well, yes, I will attempt to answer that. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Yes, in three years, we would be prescribed to apply again for an extension to the temporary use bylaw. And of course, be at council's discretion. We also then may also have the option of applying for a site specific amendment to permit a daycare center on that property alone. So it wouldn't jeopardize any of the other in permitted uses in other industrial areas. As your planner did mention, it may be a matter of consideration when you review your zoning bylaw. The curious thing is that up until about two years ago, daycare centers were allowed in industrial zones. Thank you, Mr. McCall. Counselor Gordon, I saw you had a question?
Yeah, thanks. Actually, Mr. McCall, that's a good point. To me, it doesn't seem like, like a miscarriage of planning to have that ability in industrial area, especially when people work in industrial areas. They may want to drop their kids off and pick them up again. So I think that's a great idea. We can, we could look at that. I just, one thing in the presentation piqued my interest, this fence. Who is putting the fence in and who's paying for it?
Mr. Coons, the owner of the property will be putting the fence in. We've already had discussions with Mr. Canal and assured him that the fence will go in all along that common property line. It'll be a chain link fence.
So you're, you're only telling us because, do we have to allow a fence or like, why did, why is that important that we know this? It's a no-brainer to me.
It was a correspondence that we had received, Counselor Gordon, so it was just part of correspondence and they obviously addressed it. So no matter for, really for council, if the two parties have come to an agreement, then it sounds wonderful to me. But if you care to comment, Counselor, I'm sorry.
Deputy Mayor Ross?
Yes.
Just to make you aware as, as well, there is Mr. Kevin Canal is also present and would like to speak.
I apologize. I missed the last name.
Canal.
Oh, wonderful. Did that answer your question, Counselor Gordon?
Yes, absolutely. I just didn't know. That was a town responsibility. That was something we needed to do by approving this.
Wonderful. No, that's great. Mr. Canal, how are you, sir? Thanks for coming this evening. You had a question or comment, sir?
Just in regards to the fence line, just strictly for safety reasons between the two properties. If it can be ran basically from the road back to, it looks like they're fencing most of it anyway for the child's side of it. But yeah, just strictly for safety.
Wonderful. Appreciate that. Thank you so much. Mr. McCall, we're, that's going to be done to Mr. Quinell's request? Yes, it will be. Wonderful. There you go. Thank you very much. And thank you very much for the question, Mr. Quinell. Counselor McGinn?
This is always so very heartwarming when we have people who deputize and then we have these fantastic conversations. And I want to, I want to thank you all for communicating with each other and then for coming present live like this and for genuinely responding to each other. It seems, it seems to make sense to me to, to have a resource like that in an area where, you know, adults work. So thank you very much to, to everybody who is attending tonight and thank you for a very. So thank you very much to, to everybody who is attending tonight, and thank you for a very clear insight. Presentation.
Thank you. Madam clerk, any other participants?
Nope, that's
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Anything else to add before we close out, Mister McKell? All the same, thank you very much for your time, council. Thank you very much for all involved, and thank you for coming out this night, and I'd like to close this public meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All the best.
Thank you.
Now we have on to our next item on the agenda was our public meeting with regards to council, sorry, to regard to our budget. This is a public meeting procedure by law, August two thousand twenty-seven, two thousand and eighteen, that the, this public meeting being held in accordance with section eighteen of the town's notice by law two thousand and nine dash twenty be received, to receive comments from the public regarding the proposed two thousand and twenty-one budget. Madam clerk, can you please confirm notification of this public meeting was given?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, the notice of the meeting was provided on the town's website and through social media and was also published in the Midland Mirror in the February fourth edition.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. As you're aware, this meeting this evening is being held virtually. As a result, there will be members of the public participating virtually and others by telephone. So those participants by telephone, we ask that you call in now so that you may be placed in sequence. The numbers to call is seven oh five, five two six, four two seven five, extension two two oh eight. And I believe that number is also being displayed on the Rogers TV. As a reminder, this meeting is to receive comments from the public. Councils may ask questions for clarification, but may not engage in the debate. I would like to now invite those attending the meeting, the attending the public meeting, provide their comments. I will please note that you have five minutes to speak. Please state your name and address when you begin. Madam clerk, who would we have first up?
We have Blaine DeZoome.
Mister DeZoome, please state your name and address, and I'll remind you that you have five minutes. Thank you for coming, Mister DeZoome.
Okay, thanks very much. Can you hear me? Is it all right?
We sure can. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Sorry. First of all, I want to thank council for allowing us to speak to this. My name is Blaine DeZoome, and I live at two forty-nine Les Scott Road in Midland. And I've been a member of, a resident in Midland for the last fifty-two years. And I just wanted to speak to the proposed buzz budget, specifically to the seat chief administrative office officers proposal. I want to look specifically at the salaries and benefits where we have a, what I'm seeing on this document, if I'm reading it correctly, there's a thirty-eight percent increase totaling eighty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars to the salary increase from two thousand and twenty. That, as well as a, the training, travel, meetings and conferences budget request of, I don't know, and again, I'm new to this, I don't know if that ten thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars is a request or what, who's requesting that, if that's his request or the council's request. So those are the two items that really kind of jump out at me, and, and the reason I'm fawning in, and I, I've never done this before is that I, I think that during the, the, this year of this pandemic, how everybody's been asked to sacrifice and everybody's been asked to go extra, the extra distance. How, you know, we can, we can look at a raise like that. I, maybe I'm missing something. I would like some clarification on that. I think the residents of Midland are deserve some clarification on, you know, first, a thirty-eight percent increase in salary and benefits, and then a three hundred and twenty-two percent increase in training, travel, meetings and conferences. That's really all I had to say, and I just wanted to point out that, you know, everybody's doing their part in town to, to keep taxes low. I get that. So it's, it's very difficult for a resident myself to, to look at this and see how, you know, one of the positions within the town of Midland seems to kind of be passing by their part. Anyways, that's all I wanted to say, so I just wanted to quickly meet, and that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mister DeZoome. Appreciate it, and that's what we're always here for, is to have our community engaged in the process. So I'm not sure if Miss Yorke is with us today, but if she could provide clarification with regards to this item, or if there's any other Mister DeZoome's question, Mister DeZoome? Deno? Oh, you're sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mister Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Mister DeZoome, for your question. I, I actually very much appreciate you asking this question, as I do believe there is a significant amount of confusion around this particular item. I can assure you that this has nothing to do with the salary increase for myself. I have, in fact, declined any increase this year. I've never changed the salary that I was offered when I took this position in April. I've also made sure I do not accept any overtime that would be available to me, and I just have not decided to claim that. So certainly from my base compensation, that has not occurred. What you're seeing reflected in that salary budget is the salary that covers the planned salary that covers the entire office of the C A O. So there's another individual in place there, and there's also some changes we plan to make with regards to customer service and how we provide the customer service to our, to our residents. So if that, if that change is approved through the budget process, then we'll, we'll be anxious to make some of those adjustments. But let me assure you that this has nothing to do with a salary increase for me. And as I said, I've declined any increase that would be available through, through the normal process.
Oh, sorry.
I'd also point out that the overall budget, I think we did a good job in terms of reducing our overall budget by almost twenty percent relative year over year. So I think that's an important factor to consider. We did look at a number of items. The one item you did mention there as well, training, travel, meetings and conferences. Covid is obviously going to have an impact on that, but one of the things that has certainly been asked of myself and the senior leadership team is to make sure that Midland is represented across the map when we're dealing with other forms of government. And if you saw the report about O M P F and the amount of funding that we get from the government, I think it's really important that we have representation at some of these meetings. And I think that amount, which I agree, you know, any increases is, is not, is not a good thing to do if you can avoid it. I think this one would be well worth it if, in fact, we're able to do it. So I hope that answers your question.
Now, Mister Deno, all part of the
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just want to make sure we get the clarification all the way around. Part of the increase on that thirty-four percent is partly that you didn't address, and I understand to be correct, is because you started in April, it's an increase from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one. That's sort of, sort of inflating that number. Is that correct, sir?
Well, I think, I think the previous C A O who was in here was not, was on contract, so I'm not sure if there was some time differential there when you compare the two.
I just want to make sure we get all the facts. That's great. Mister Zone, did I, did I hear you had a follow-up, sir?
Yeah, sorry. No, when I was, when I was in the, on the website, I went through the, the list, and it was indicating how many employees in each, in each division. And in the C A O division, there was only one employee listed. So the comment was made that there's possibly other people going to be
There's an, there's an executive assistant that, that helps out the C A O, and I, I'm not sure if that position was sort of adjusted and moved into a different category, but maybe Mister Deno could answer.
Yeah, through you, through you, Deputy Mayor, yes, there's, there's certainly another person who reports into that office. Those costs were shared across the organization, and again, what you're seeing in a lot of these budgets is a bit of a reset to make sure that we're putting the cost where we think they should be reflected. So those costs are now all within the C A O office. And as I mentioned, should the budget be approved, there are some adjustments we'd be making for existing staff to take on some customer service responsibilities.
Is that satisfying your answer, or sorry, your question, Mister Zone?
Yeah, you know what? I mean, I, I just think the optics of it are not good at all. And, you know, during dealing with, I mean, you know what I'm saying? Like, I mean, I'm a layman when it comes to this. But when you see those sorts of increases during a, you know, the, with the, dealing with a pandemic, and it, it's just really hard to, to look at that and, and just kind of, you know, pass it off, and that's what my concern was.
We greatly appreciate you bringing it up, and hopefully we got the clarification to the public. So greatly appreciated.
May I make one, one final clarification? I want to be very clear on this. The overall budget is decreasing by twenty percent year over year. Decreasing by twenty percent year over year. There is no salary change in the people that are existing in that, in that function. I have not accepted any increase from the salary that was given to me. So I want to be very clear and transparent on that. Any change that would be considered is there is to offer enhanced customer service with existing staff that we have.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Mister Deno. And thank you very much, Mister DeZoome, for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have Mister Daniel Pellerin.
Hi, thanks for, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can, Mister Pellerin. If you could state your address, that'd be wonderful, and, and bring forward your question.
Yeah, sure. I'm actually, I'm, I'm Robin's point, so I'm in Victoria Harbor, actually, but I'm hearing, I'm here to speak about the North Semco Capitals Girls Hockey Association.
Yes, sir.
So obviously, it encompasses not just only Midland, but the other municipalities, because we are North Semco, so, and we are out of the Midland area. So I, I just want to, I'm going to try and be brief here, but I just want to kind of take you back to what happened in the summer in regards to some of the fees that were kind of passed on to the local associations. So, and I know this is kind of for budgetary reasons, so you know, shortly after, I guess, the first wave of the pandemic, the town of Midland and the North Semco Rec Center decided to open up the arena, and from what we understand, they were, they entered into an agreement with the, I guess, the local or the regional organization, the North Central Predators, which is a triple-A boys' organization, to increase fees. So those, those fees were passed on to ourselves as well as Midland Minor Hockey. We were never given a written agreement about this, but simply told that these would, these fees would be passed on to us. So we did not have a chance to plan for a large increase in our operating costs. We were told this increase was because of cleaning costs. And it's been our understanding that from watching the news that the money has been given to municipalities for the government to cover the cost of cleaning and COVID in general. So from what we witnessed in the arena, there are no extra staff that have been working, you know, because of COVID and cleaning and things like that. So we feel that the rate was simply passed on to the associations. And from what we understand, there was never a vote by council to increase the rate. So we don't think there's any reason why the town can justify an added expense of thirty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents an hour. Our minor hockey rate has always been set at a hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-four cents. But, you know, since the pandemic, the rate was increased to a hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-three cents before, before taxes. We've checked around with other local minor hockey associations and have not found any municipalities that have increased their fees during these unprecedented times. In fact, we found that spring water has lowered their rates the entire time they were open, and Aurelia currently, since we were in the red zone, is decreasing their rentals by fifty percent. And we also have to realize that we're at, you know, if the rink was to open, which we're hopeful it is, we're only allowed ten skaters on the ice. And so the rate would be still, you know, as we would have had twenty-five skaters on the ice, so that, that, you know, the cost to us does not make sense. I do have minor hockey rates from across the area, and I think that council has done a good job in keeping us fairly competitive with the other municipalities. But when we raise the rate thirty-nine dollars, our rate is comparable with Barry's rate. And, and I just think we have to realize that we, we are in Midland, and, you know, there is a substantial difference between ourselves and some of the other municipalities. Even a place like Collingwood, who I would consider very comparable, is only charging a minor hockey rate of a hundred and seven dollars an hour. So that's a significant difference right there. So just in closing, I know there's a lot of things for you guys to think about, but I, I want us to realize that, you guys to realize that we're very happy. And I think people in general with, are happy with how the rec center has handled everything during the pandemic. And we're thankful for all of the countless individuals that have, you know, put effort in during these difficult times. But since we moved into the red zone, we're really looking forward to heading back on the ice as soon as possible. But to be honest, we will not be able to sustain the increased costs over time. So we have to remember that we are a small community and cannot be comparing ourselves to larger municipalities. Hockey is already considered a sport for the privileged, and raising rates will only exacerbate this reality. The community center, we all know that this is the heart of a community, a welcoming and inclusive space that brings people together. And I am not alone in feeling that we need to keep it that way. So we, we know that you believe this too, and we hope you'll reconsider the cost. And we hope you'll reconsider, obviously, opening the arena. So thanks for your time. I appreciate it. And there's a lot of things you guys have to talk about, so I just wanted to give my two cents, and hopefully we can come to some kind of conclusion.
Thank you very much. Mister Deno?
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Pellerin, for, for the question, through you, Deputy Mayor to council, and certainly the members of the public. I, I certainly appreciate the circumstance that everyone feels in terms of, of the services that are being offered. I am a hockey parent, three kids that have gone through all levels of hockey. I've been to, I think, almost every arena in this province. I'm a proud coach who's been able to secure five O M H A championships with some folks. So I can certainly appreciate, you know, what hockey does for kids and communities. I'm also a big basketball fan, so I enjoy the gym aspects of things as well. So those services, I, I absolutely agree, are extremely vital and important. And was, and it's not just my passion for this. I know everyone feels that way in Midland, and you can see it in that facility. When I said I've been to every rink in this province, I, I'd say Midland is one of, one of those treasures of a rink. I mean, it's a beautiful facility. It does come at a cost, though, and, you know, to be pranked, I think everyone knows that that facility, not just the rink, but the gym and the other facilities lose over a million dollars a year in cost. And that has to come from the taxpayer, unfortunately. The taxpayers of Midland pay for that. I know it's a North Semco recreational facility, but it is paid for by the Midland residents through their taxes. It is covered through that. So the fees do not reflect the cost of those, those services that we provide. When the pandemic hit, because we wanted to offer services as quickly as possible to our residents, we were one of the first municipalities that looked at opening a hockey rink. The only way we thought we could do that is we had some help from the community to either help us with protocols or help us cover some of the cost. So to have two minimum wage people help us clean something that's very touch, you know, touch, interactive, when you're talking about hockey, lots of spaces are touched. There's a lot of touch points to clean. We thought that was a reasonable request to make of hockey for a temporary position. We had no idea where the pandemic was going. And from my understanding, that was agreed to, and that's how we were able to open. We could have made the decision, like other municipalities, to close the facility and save costs and lay off people. We did not do that. We wanted to open it because exactly what people are saying, this is important services for our communities, and that's what we were committed to doing. And we did that throughout the pandemic. Do we need to revisit the costs in the budget? You'll see, I think, a more modest increase that I think we're proposing in a number of areas, including some of the, the ice rinks to help make sure we're, we're presenting that balanced approach of managing costs. Some of them are inflation-related. They haven't seen cost increases for some time, and we have to make that assessment. That is our responsibility to do that as staff, and certainly for council to consider it as something they want to do. There's no question the facility is losing money. Can we make up some of that difference so that the taxpayers across the board are not bearing all of that responsibility? I think it is something that's responsible and we need to consider. But I can, I can absolutely tell you that the decision to open this facility was absolutely predicated on getting it open as quickly as possible and as safely as possible for everyone to use it. And we're going to make that same assessment when we go into this red zone that we talked about, because, again, we've kept our ice in knowing that hopefully we can reopen soon. And I'm hoping that our, our people are, are in touch with you to find out what the interest is, because we want to make certainly certainly that assessment again uh, and open as quickly as possible. Still pretty restrictive in terms of the number of people we can offer. But I think we all appreciate how important it is to the community and we want to make sure we're doing that with, uh, with all the facts. I hope that helps. I know there's, there's been a lot of passion around, around what's happening, but I can tell you that, as you mentioned, everyone at that facility is really committed to operate it as effectively as possible. And um you know, I want to thank all of them for what they're doing.
Very much, Mr. Dino.
Can I, can I just respond to that?
Follow up, sir? Yes, sir.
Um, so thank you for all those points. I think those are, uh, those are very valid and I, and I appreciate the, uh, I guess the honesty on your end. Um, I think as a community, people uh need the upfront and honest assessment of where the rink is going and and like you said, the, you know, it is the heart of the community and you are a hockey parent yourself, so you do, I think you do appreciate that. Um, I think, you know, hopefully the council can, can kind of take a look at where those prices are going. Um, and I, and I do realize that uh there's a lot of budget deliberations and I do realize facilities in general lose money. Um, so that is something obviously you have to balance all the time. But I think um, I would assume there are a number of ways that you can uh, put money back into the facility, not just only maybe concentrating on hockey. And I think probably you're, you've looked at that, but I, I, I want, I want you to be cautious because I know that um, you know, living as a resident in the area, there are people moving to this town and they are conscious of what takes place within a community uh and they're aware of uh how they're treated, I guess. So um, that's all I really have to say. I, I hope to be back on the ice very soon. I hope council can see uh the importance behind the facility. And uh we can move forward and uh in a, in a good way because there are a lot of kids. Yes, maybe they're privileged, but there are kids that, you know, do get a helping hand in terms of registrations. Not only in hockey, basketball, I, I completely agree. I don't care what the sport is. Um, and we need to be able to provide those opportunities in a, with a decent uh registration fee. Or, okay?
Thank you very much, sir. I see Councilman had a comment. Councilman?
Oh, thank you so much for this background. Um, I actually spoke with Mr. Dzone today, and I haven't been at St. Teresa's for almost twenty-five years, but he's still somehow giving me homework. Uh, but I was looking up ice allocation and fees and, and we were talking, uh, as we're getting lots of emails from, uh, concerned residents. So I guess we do actually have multiple fees. So Mr. Pellerin, um, obviously there's some concern over the minor people being charged the out rate. What we're proposing or what's in the fee structure is a five percent increase for the minor, uh, the lower tier rate. And so instead of one forty-six, it would be uh one fifty-four. So
And I, I, I think that's, that's well within okay, reason. The only, the real concern I have is if the, if the rate increase, you know, is continues at the rate it is, it's just unsustainable for people. I agree with five percent. I mean, you do have to raise rates, things, you know, cost change, that, that's fair. A five percent uh in- increase is completely fair, but not, not the increase that we're seeing consistently. I mean, if you just look at, uh, let's just say, you know, we were able to open the rink in the next week at two hundred and six dollars. I mean, that's twenty dollars a kid an hour. Uh, when you have families with multiple kids, that's a significant amount of money uh per kid at, you know, with only allowing ten people on the ice. So I just want, you know, council to consider that's a significant cost and, and we talk about people losing their jobs and you know, living paycheck to paycheck. This might be the only activity they're able to do. Not only that, but whatever sport you're participating in, so.
Thank, thank you very much, sir. And I, I know we have a lot more waiting, so uh I appreciate the uh comment and council, I, I can promise you that there's not anybody that doesn't feel, you know, that recreation for our, our youth is not important. It's just, we're gonna have a bigger conversation at the budget, but I greatly, greatly appreciate you coming and uh hopefully we get those kids back on the ice sooner than later.
Yeah, thanks so much. I appreciate your time and have a great night, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. Uh, Madam Clerk, next up.
Ms. Colleen Baker.
Ms. Baker. Ms. Baker, if you could state, you're on mute. Hi, Ms. Baker, how are you? If you could state your uh address, that'd be wonderful.
I'm at one fifty-four South Winds Crescent. Um, I just want to thank you all um for allowing me to speak. I'm also speaking on behalf of minor hockey associations in our area. Um, I am the president of Midland Minor Hockey. Um, I want to thank Dan for speaking. We agree with everything he said um to you guys previously. Um, I've sent you all emails asking to go back to the youth fee. Um, we've been hit really hard paying the adult fee this season with um the pandemic, losing registrations because of the pandemic, and we've had to keep our registrations high. We were never given any um agreement per se saying this is the new thing for this. It was, you are paying this. Um, we were told it was not an agreement. Um, so we were not able to adjust fees this season to accommodate um kids playing and having to pay those high fees. Um, I think we also need to, like, mental health and well-being is a huge part of our community and sports, especially hockey. And it brings together friendship, a sense of belonging and family, which is much needed during this time and every other time for kids. They need that. So the fees this year that we've been paying, I just want to put this in perspective. If fees continue to go up each year, we may have to charge almost a thousand dollars for local league hockey per player. That's how much, and that's going to take away hockey from low income and middle income families. And I don't know about you, but I would not be able to afford my one child to play at a thousand dollars for local league hockey. That does not include rap hockey. That's even more money. And that does not include equipment every year. That does not include tournaments, travel. That doesn't include anything. We are going to lose registrations and we're going to lose that sense of belonging for the children in our community if we continue to see all these ice prices keep rising. Yes, five percent, but what's going to happen next year and the year after and the year after? We as an association need to guarantee that this is not going to keep going up every year. If this continues to keep going up, we're not going to have Midland Minor Hockey. Where you're going to lose out on all the ice time that we rent for our children to play. That's over three hundred players in our association alone. It is so hard this year to see all this happening in a pandemic when people are struggling. It's really heartbreaking that this has happened. We wanted to get those kids on the ice because it's been hard for them. They haven't been able to see friends, haven't been able to see family. That was something they looked forward to. And I can tell you right now, our association will not be going on the ice as long as we are in the red zone. We cannot afford it. Our families cannot afford to be on the ice. Um, so I'm really asking on behalf of Midland Minor Hockey and all the other hockey associations that use your facilities to restore the hourly rate for youth and to commit to us that we are not going to see hikes every single year, that we can continue to run this program for our children's mental and physical health. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you mentioned other associations. Could you share us what the status in Penetang would be?
They um had to close.
So they have no ice?
They have no ice right now.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Dino, you care to comment or uh, we'll take a comment, uh, sorry, your concerns to our budget meeting on Monday?
No, thank you. Thank you again. No, I, I've um, Ms. Baker has shared certainly correspondence with me and um I mean, I think you, you could probably understand my personal perspective on, on hockey and the importance. Um, and one of, one of our family hockey members was our daughter as well, so it spans both uh, both uh female and male hockey, and she was the high scorer. So I appreciate how important it is for every member uh to have participation in this. Uh, my responsibility as C A O though is, is, is to make sure that those costs are understood. Not only for, for this facility, you know, for the ice pads, but for all those facilities. And for the other services that, you know, we want to make sure that uh, other residents in our town need. You know, we've, we've, we've talked about affordable housing and how we need to to support that, how we need to support mobility and uh accessible transit, and how we want to improve access to our trails and roads. All of that certainly comes into consideration. That's where obviously the difficult decisions are made. Uh, every member of this council, I know, will say we support uh, physical activity and the mental health, way, health and well-being of, of parents and, and children. So it's it is tough and that's why I think we're, we're trying to really put a balanced perspective. Now that we have a better idea of how to manage the pandemic uh with a five percent increase on some of those ice rates. Can we continue to do that and hold those rates? Um, I hope so. I hope so, and it, but it will depend on those other things that we talked about. How much? How much assistance can we get from the government? Can we get more assistance? Can we create more revenue opportunities for this town so that we can contribute to those services that we all need? That's part of the reason why, you know, we're making some of the adjustments in the town and some of the requests we're making. We need to make uh ourselves a little more prosperous so we can cover some of the services people need. So I, I hear you loud and clear. I understand exactly why you, you feel you need that need. I hope people appreciate that, you know, our, our response early in the pandemic was, was purely because we wanted to offer those services and we had no reasonable way to cover those costs. There was no funding predicted and we needed to make some uh decisions quickly to serve you. And that's, that's what was done. So hopefully this budget will give you a bit of confidence and predictability for this year. And certainly that's what we'll try to do in, in uh other years as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baker, for coming this evening. Any follow-up question?
Um, I just want to say thank you for listening and um I just don't want to see our community, our kids suffer because of a pandemic and I don't want to see their mental health, their physical health um, go down the tubes because we're having to pay um way too much money. So um, thank you again for listening and I hope you really consider it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baker. Appreciate you coming this evening. It's never easy to uh express uh your concerns, but we greatly appreciate your input. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next up.
Yes, Deputy Mayor, we have Mr. Robert Garraway.
Mr. Garraway, how are you this evening? Um, please state your address and um your question, please, sir. Is Mr. Garraway there?
Mr. Garraway, did you want to unmute, please?
I don't even, oh, there he is. Mr. Garraway?
Oh. He's, he's still muted. Um.
Am I not here? Mr. Mr. Gary, you're on muted. How are you this evening, sir?
Good. I'm seven ninety-four Bay Street.
Wonderful. Welcome. Thanks for coming this evening. Uh, your question, sir?
Just wondering why the rates for the water and the sewer is going up ninety percent this year or nine percent?
It's uh Mr. Campbell, you care to uh comment if you don't mind? I know there's quite a bit of infrastructure responsibilities, but I'll allow Mr. Gar, uh, sorry, Mr. Campbell to add some input.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, for the question through to you, to Mr. Garraway. Uh, the rates are going up by four and five percent, not nine percent, uh, just for clarification. And those costs are around our asset renewal costs. When you look at the costs of the assets, the wear down of the system, uh, the town needs to make sure they put enough money in the bank to, to replace those assets. Our, our wastewater plant, uh, for example, is twenty-five years old since it was last rebuilt. That's getting towards the end of its life and will be needing about twenty million dollars over the next few years to, to rebuild that. The only way to, to get that, that money is to gradually increase the fees year over year. So for the last number of years, we've been going at four and five percent uh increases each year. And I've told council and projected we'll be doing four and five percent increases for a number of years going forward. Uh, if we are going to have enough money on, in our reserves to pay for the replacement of of that wastewater plant. And the same on, on the water system. One of our water towers is over a hundred and ten years old. Uh, it's at end of life. Uh, to replace that water tower will be in a uh a million dollars uh to, to replace that water tower and some of the infrastructure. So we have huge costs and if you want to get more detail, we've, uh, the Water Master Plan was approved by council in in uh December, the Wastewater Master Plan uh is coming to council in, in March. And uh by reading both those documents, and we've had public meetings and public input over the last two years on, on this subject, it's looking at what are those needs going forward, looking at where the growth in the town is, how are we going to have to grow? Those increases are not day-to-day operating cost increases. Yes, we've had increases for our fuels, our, uh, our uh chemicals that are inflationary in nature. Those, the, the larger increases are purely to put money in the bank uh to pay for these capital replacements.
Mr. Gary, uh, you had a follow-up? Any other questions?
He seemed to answer it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for calling in. I greatly appreciate your input. Thank you. Um, Ms. Councilman, you had a comment with regards to this item?
It is worth noting.
Very much, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you so much. I, it was, it is worth noting that for many users in town that we only calculate your water rate and we ca- calculate your sewer rate based off one point three times the amount of water you use. So many people in town will have water and sewer and your sewer rates are going to be calculated on how much you water use. So be mindful if you're watering your lawn because you're paying sewer rates on that. If you are connected to the sewers.
Mayor Strathairn, I saw you had your card up. You had a comment, sir?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to let the last caller know that the tax levy cannot be used to pay for the water rates. Sorry, for, for water and sewer usage. So the province has mandated that all costs associated with water supply and sewage is, has to be captured from the users themselves and through the rates. It's, it's a huge shift in terms of how business used to be done and will be done. And so in order to catch up and also to Mr. Campbell's comment, a lot of this infrastrates, infrastructure that's been put in back in the sixties and seventies, it's, it's coming to its useful end. And we do need to, to do that, but it's not something that we just decided we would do. It's the province has turned around and said you will capture all costs in your rate structure uh and only in your rate structure. So I just thought it'd be useful to point that out to uh, to Mr. Garraway.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. And thank you very, very much, Mr. Garraway.
You.
Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, next on the agenda?
Um, I, there is supposed to be um two additional people. I'm not quite sure whether they're in attendance. Dylan Saka or Cack. Um, and Amanda Artuziak. However, I did not see them um as participants, so
Did we have any, did we have any call-ins? Anyone waiting on line?
Not at this moment. Um, I did have an individual call during the public meeting for uh one seventy-four uh for the planning matter. And I had asked, you know, suggested that he call back.
They call back. Well, let's hope that uh Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's hope that we answered all their questions already, but uh we'll allow, I'll, I'll make it last, uh, another call that if anyone would like to be involved with the public meeting this evening, we would suggest that you um call in at seven oh five, five two six, four two seven five, extension two two oh eight. And uh, we'd love to hear from our public. How, should we give it a minute, Madam Clerk or?
Yeah, so I'm thinking if we just give, oh, we've got someone calling in just a moment.
Wonderful. And uh, while we're waiting, uh, I see Council Chesky had a sign up. Council Chesky, you got a question, sir?
I think very much, just uh, in terms of process, uh, we advertised the uh public, public input meeting for the budget to be at seven o'clock and it's two hours later. So I just, for future reference, if we could, you know, advertise it for seven P M. and have the meeting at seven P M., we'd probably get a better turnout. Um, and you know, this is late for us. Uh, we have a lot of residents in our town that this is past bedtime. So uh, just for the future, in my opinion.
Point taken. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, you said we had another person on the line?
Yes, De- Deputy Mayor Ross, we have Yvonne Teef on the line and Yes, Deputy Mayor Ross, we have Yvonne Teef on the line and I will just put her on speaker just one moment.
Wonderful. Ms. Teef, if you could state your address, that'd be great.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, how are you?
Good day.
You could state your address for the record. It'd be wonderful.
Oh, sorry, Yvonne Teef, 229 Bay Street, Midland.
Wonderful. You had a question?
Yes, thank you for taking my call tonight. Um, I have a call, I have a question regarding the clarification of the funding on the big, big project for the downtown. Originally, 10.5 million came from the PUC Reserve, which was supposed to be a temporary funding, I guess. And then new funding in the amount of 14.5 was taken and there was supposed to be, I guess, new funding and new loan. But can we find out where that 10.5 went to and if it was actually placed back into the PUC Reserve?
We will, we'll get that answer for you right now, Mr. Oh, sorry, I'm not sure who would answer it. Would that be Mr. Jeremy or Mr. Campbell or? I see Mr. Jeremy's unmuted. So Mr. Jeremy, sir? You could explain the funding model, please?
Certainly. So the, the $10.5 million from the Community Wide Initiatives Reserve was, was tagged during, as part of a staff report as potential for short term bridge financing that we were going to do internally. During the process of completing the project, we did draw somewhere in the neighborhood of, I think it was $2 million from that reserve. When we ultimately issued the $12 million debenture in November of 2020, those funds were repaid in full to the Community Wide Initiatives Reserve. So all funds have been returned to our internal sources.
Does that answer your question? Did you have a follow up?
Yes, I do.
Yes, please.
Show that on the actual budget. Like, would that going anywhere on this particular budget at all, or?
Mr. Jeremy, I guess the question was, I'm having a hard time hearing you unfortunately, but I believe it was where would, was, would that show on the budget that the money was returned that we, we borrowed?
That's not something that you would see through the budget. No. That's an, in, in internal movement of, of funds that it's not, yeah, it's not something that you would see through the budget per se.
Because it, to clarify, it really wasn't a cost. It was just, sorry, shuffling some money from one account to another. So it would, would never amount to a, a, a line item. Is that correct, sir?
Correct, yes. So if we were looking at how it, how it has ultimately panned out, it's ultimately panned out in the, in the external debt financing that occurred back in November. So I guess if we were looking to see where would, where would you see the implications of how the project was financed? You're seeing it through the, the repayment of that debt. The, the debt servicing costs that are incurred each year. And just going by memory here, I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $600,000 and change that we are, we are paying each year to pay off that external debt. And that 600 and some odd thousand dollars is funded from a, a number of different sources. There's a tax component. There's a water wastewater component. There's a development charges component. So it's, it's broken up into a bunch of smaller chunks that are ultimately making, making the payments on that debt. So that's, that's where you would see it in the budget.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Follow up, any other questions, Ms. Teef?
Yeah, it's just very deceiving when we're told certain things, but then like the money's taken out of things. But that things are not fixed. So if there's any transparency that can happen in the future, that's a huge amount of money that's being transferred. And we're assuming that, you know, it could be transferred, but nothing ever comes about. The transparency would be nice to have. And I do have one more question.
Please.
Um, regarding the $1.5 million construction on Highway 93, whereby the county official was looking for funding after the fact that the construction was done. Is that being taken out, taken into account in this budget? And where would I find that?
Mr. Campbell, with regards to the, if I understand correctly, it's very hard to hear, but if I understand correctly, it was the $1.4 million with regards to the county trail on Highway 93.
Yeah, that, that county project, the town's portion is $1.8 million that the county has in formally request. We're waiting for a formal request from the county before that would be considered by council.
Thank you, Counselor. Sir, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Do you have a follow up, Ms. Teef?
Hello?
Hello, yeah.
Sorry, is that going to be in this budget? Because that's an awful lot of money for 2021. That's not really being considered as of yet, but it will be somewhat financed or not?
Mr. Campbell?
Uh, we're waiting to see if that's what the county actually does ask us for. We have no formal requests at this date.
Wonderful. So at this, this point, we haven't been asked. Mayor, Mayor Shetherton?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, just for the caller's sense of state of mind about what's going on with the funds from MPUC. The MPUC grant has a committee comprised of, of two externals and some two, two people from council. And they are very diligent in terms of drawing up understandings between the fund and the municipality. And they are very diligent in terms of making sure that they understand when the funds are coming back, what the rate is being paid for the funds and so on and is being satisfied. And it's also something that typically would go before our auditors at end of year. And I think, I think I could can reassure the caller that these things, while they may not show up as a budgetary item or a budgetary transfer, they do show up within the accounts and they are looked at by independent eyes to make sure that nothing falls between the cracks.
Thank you, Worship. Any other questions?
Thank you. Nope.
Thank you so much for calling in this evening. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night. Madam Clerk, do we have any other callers or anyone with a question for our council this evening?
I did have a couple callers trying to, to call in. So if you just mind the number.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be happy to wait. No problem.
Okay, I'll just, I do have someone just a moment.
Sure.
Um, so Deputy Mayor Ross, I do have Howie Major on the line, but just before I, I add him, I just wanted to remind or not remind, but just to make everyone aware. And this is something that the Deputy Mayor would be advising of once the, the meeting concluded, that all of these, these comments that are being received, staff are compiling all of the comments and questions that are being raised this evening, as well as those submitted via emails, part of the budget process, and we'll be making them available on the town's website. And responses will be provided to these questions. So as much as, you know, staff are responding this evening, it's, you know, that is generally the process that is being undertaken this year. So just
That's, that's fantastic. That's fantastic. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
And I will
Wonderful. We have Mr. Majors?
Go ahead, Mr. Majors.
Mr. Majors, if, if you could state your address, please, sir. How are you this evening?
Howie Major, Scott Street. Good.
Wonderful.
Two quick questions. One is,
Sure.
why is the town taking a bind a machine to get rid of stumps and asphalt roller? When we've got taxpayers in town that own businesses that can do those jobs? Why not give it to them?
And your second question?
My second question is how come when there's only three people laid off in the town? The hydrants aren't cleaned out around town and there was a couple weeks with no snow. And they never lowered down the banks at the corners. So by the time you pull out to see if anything's coming, you're damn near hit. Like they should have been on highwaying the banks down around town just to make it safer for us to drive. And hydrants every, I've been around town and there's hardly any hydrants cleaned out. So I don't know if that messes up your house insurance or not, but the hydrant's not being cleaned out.
Thank you very much. We'll turn it over to Mr. Campbell with regards to the asphalt and stump remover. Mr. Campbell, thank you so much, sir.
Through you, Mr. Chair. That, that equipment, it's, it's equipment that we've, we've had in the past and it's, needs to be replaced. Contracting out, we, we contract out larger jobs, but sometimes it's just more efficient if we have our own equipment to go and, and do some work. So it's that trade off between contracting out services and doing it ourselves. And some of these piece equipment, having them handy makes our lives more efficient. If council wishes us to contract out more work as, as we get through this budget process to change our cost allocation structure, we can certainly look at that.
Wonderful. Thank you. And, and with regards to our, our hydro meters, sorry, our water meters and being shoveled out, etc. I know we've received a lot of snow in the last few weeks, but
They've gone on all winter with the hydrants. They haven't been cleaned out all winter. So it's not just this last two weeks.
No, I, I understand, but I'd ask Mr. Campbell if he could provide with some clar, clarification with regards to those.
I'll have to talk to staff to see why it hasn't been done.
What? Wonderful. Mr. Majors, we hear your concerns and I, I have full confidence it'll be addressed. I greatly appreciate it.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments before you leave, sir? Did we lose them, Madam Clerk? Thank you very much, Mr. Major, for calling in.
Oh, we must have lost.
Madam Clerk, any other questions or comments?
Uh, there was another individual that was attempting to
All right, we'll give them a minute. I'll remind anybody if they have a, a call, a question or comment with regards to 2021 municipal budget, to call 705-526-4275, extension 2208. And I will remind that exactly what the clerk just reminded us of, that please note that staff are compiling all of the comments and questions raised this evening, as well as those submitted by email as part of the budget process. And we'll be making them available on the town's website along with the responses. So that is wonderful news. So not only if you missed a question or had a comment, then it will be on our website for a full review of the public. So that's, that's great news. So we'll give them another minute. It's 9:24. Uh, we'll give them two more minutes to see if anyone else has interest in calling. We'd love to hear from you. I guess we have no more calls. So being that there is no further comments, we would like to thank everyone for their attendance and participation.
If you could bear with me just one moment, I think somebody left a message. So I'm just going to to, to act.
Wonderful. No problem. Be happy to. Any other questions or comments from our council at this point? Or we'll just leave it to see if Madam Clerk comes back? Wonderful.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, I have Kirk Binns, 297 Estate Court.
Wonderful. Mr. Bin, how are you, sir?
Go ahead, Mr. Bin.
Good evening, everybody.
Wonderful. Thanks for calling in this evening. You had a question?
Yes, I certainly do. My question revolves around the budget, some of the numbers in it, in a tax hike of 4.65%. So in the budget, I see an additional four headcount for $468,000 as well as nine capital projects over 250K spend. So my question revolves around how we can justify such a budget in increasing a tax rate of 4.65% during a pandemic, per previous callers mentioning. You know, on a, on a normal year, I think that's a little bit absurd. The, the county is at a 0% tax rate increase and the town is now proposing 4.65%. And we're talking about a four person incremental headcount of $468,000, nine capital project spends over 250K. You know, it just seems a little out of touch to me. So I, you know, I'm curious as to how anybody could justify improving a budget with a, with an increase, with a tax increase to cover such things.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the question, Mr. Dino. Now, I, I will comment that none of those positions have been approved. It's a proposed, so this is a proposed budget. And we are still working on the process, but I appreciate the question, Mr. Dino.
Dino, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bin and through you, Deputy Mayor, to, to the members of council and public. And certainly do appreciate that perspective on, on what the budget ask is. And that's not only for the town. That's, that's also for our agency boards and commissions. There's some council asks and of course, the additional staff that you mentioned. What will, what will eventually be approved will, will certainly be something that, that council will, will spend some time deliberating next week and, and this, this process with, with the feedback from the public is an important aspect of that. What we've tried to make sure is reflected, and I, I think I could probably speak on, on behalf of the ABC's agency boards and commissions who also presented was, you know, there is, there are certain, there are certain avenues that other municipalities may have to provide relief to their, their municipalities. Some of them can dig into reserves to provide relief on, on some of those tax levy impacts. We, we don't have much flexibility from that perspective. What we need to do, and it's certainly part of the strategic initiative here at Midland, is to create a, create a community where we can actually grow job prosperity and create an environment where hopefully we can provide more tax relief to our, to our residents. And that includes obviously working, working directly with the government to get funding on projects or maybe direct funding that, you know, some of our neighbors may have received. Can you avoid doing that this year and push it off for another year? You can do that. Will it potentially cause problems down the road? I think that's something that has to be considered. Are you, are you just moving that problem to another year? I think that's one of the potential consequences of doing that. So you may pause it for a year. But you could fall behind. Certainly our recommendation is, you know, that some of these asks are important to help us continue to recover. I think we've done a very good job in Midland positioning ourselves to come out of the COVID, hitting the ground running, if you like, in terms of serving our businesses and residents. And I would certainly like to see us do that. It's about trying to recover so you can offer that relief. But again, we will, we will go with the direction of council and, and take that through the, the budget process next week.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dino. Did you have a follow up, sir?
You know, with all due respect, the, the private sector is dying, you know, businesses are, you know, people are losing jobs, businesses are closing, and we're talking about a four person incremental headcount of $468,000. And then we're talking about deferring. You know, we're in a pandemic and you guys are talking about raising taxes 4.65% for these things. So the needless services, if you guys got to come up with another way to balance the budget without increasing taxes. the need for less services, if you guys got to come up with another way to balance the budget without increasing taxes, that would be recommended on my end, but that's up to you guys to figure out. But I don't, I don't understand how anybody can justify increasing taxes during this time and adding a head adding headcount or or incremental headcount of 468 grand when people are losing their jobs.
Point point is taken and we appreciate it. And we have some big discussions to start with all of council on Monday morning. So I greatly, greatly appreciate it. I know that all council heard you and we'll definitely have that conversation.
Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much, sir, for calling in. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You as well. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, any other questions or comments?
Um, again, yes, I did have an individual attempting to call in. I'm just going to, I did get their number, so I'm going to try to reach them. Oh,
Sure.
And there, that is them just calling.
Did we have so another?
I have Mr. Dickinson from 353 Gloucester on the line.
Oh, wonderful. Mr. Dickinson, how are you, sir?
I'm doing well, thank you. And thank you for having this public meeting. I just wanted to express my support to Mr. Denno and the efforts of staff. I know that council's got a hard task ahead of them deciding what stays and what goes. Uh, but I um, I I know that um, that the that Mr. Denno and the and the staff have really been uh, been diligent and I think and made a good case for what they've asked for. So uh, um, I just want to say that let's not try and get 0% when that would be worse than um, in the long run than than a slight increase. Um, so I I know that some people feel that in a pandemic, we can't increase at all. Um, I'm not sure Midland's in a state where we can make that choice. Um, so I know we want to get close to that if we can, but I just wanted to say that I support the direction of staff so far.
Well, thank, thank you very much for your comments. They're greatly appreciated.
Uh, thank you. And I don't know if you have any questions?
Any question for Mr. Dixon? Uh, Mr. May, uh, sorry, Councilman.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I know, uh, thank you again, Mr. Dickinson, for all your volunteering with some of the committees. Um, I just had a question. I know you're a big advocate for accessibility and pedestrian initiatives. Was there any specific thing that you saw in the budget that stood out to you that you supported? Or are you just basically making a general comment that you support generally the budget? Thank you.
Um, at the moment, it's just a general comment. Um, I I have, I I still have to work through quite a bit of it. Um, it's a, it's a big document and I'm not on council, so I I appreciate all um, you guys can have to do in kind of assessing um, real cha- the challenge of um, making the final decision.
Well, we greatly appreciate your support. Thank you very much, sir. And we appreciate you calling in this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, any other calls this evening?
Um, no, that's it, Deputy Mayor.
Wonderful.
I just wanted to say, though, I do think that there were a couple of people that were trying to um, call that had already spoken. So just for those individuals, if um, that have already had an opportunity to speak, if you still have some questions, please submit those questions to budget@midland.ca and they will be added with along with all of the other comments. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And I want to thank everybody. It's not easy in this uh, this pandemic going virtual with regards to a public meeting. I think it went very well, but please, please, if there's anybody that had a question that weren't able to get in, please forward your your question to budget@midland.ca and we'll be sure to get it up on our website and answer for you. So we we greatly appreciate everybody and uh, yes.
I I did have a another individual calling.
Wonderful.
And unfortunately, I was, I was listening, so.
Okay.
Just give it a minute.
We'll allow, we'll allow one more call and then we'll call this meeting closed and we'll, if we have some more comments with regards to to questions, we'll get them on our website and they can forward by email.
Yeah, it was Mr. Meredith. So if he could just.
Sure.
He's listening, if he could just call back.
We'll give it, we'll give him a minute. Any luck with regard to calling back, Madam Clerk?
No, nothing. Um.
All right. Well, we'll have to, we'll have to close this meeting.
Uh, sorry, Deputy Mayor, that is him now. And I apologize. I did miss him because I was I was providing.
No problem. Wonderful.
I'll grab him now.
Great.
Hello, Karen Speet. Go ahead, Mr. Meredith, provide your name and your address.
Mr. Meredith, I need your name and address, sir, for the record.
Our town has 906 Cugel Avenue.
Uh, wonderful, Mr. Meredith. How are you this evening?
Cugel Avenue.
Wonderful. What's your question, sir?
Go ahead with your question.
Good, how are you? Thank, good evening, everybody, and thanks for taking my question. I'm just going back to the budget regarding our CEO.
Hello? We lose them?
Hello?
Yeah, please go ahead, sir. We have a hard time hearing you.
Hello? Oh, I think we lost him.
All right. Should we give him a minute to call back or?
No, let's just, I guess, give him a second. Yeah.
Sure.
Otherwise, I think we're done.
That Madam Clerk, if it's any consolation, I've been getting some text messages from people that have been trying to call in and the line's busy or not working. I don't know if the system got overloaded, but anyway, just it's not you. Like, they're they're actually genuinely trying to call in and getting dropped.
Fair enough. No, what it is, is that that's why the Deputy Mayor had indicated that people call in advance while the the video for the um, those participating via the Zoom link, um, when they were presenting, because I could put them in the queue. Otherwise, once the phone is ringing, I can't. Unfortunately, I can't grab.
And hopefully, we can at least get their questions with regards to an email to budget@midland.ca and we'll be sure to get that answer. Uh, we'll give Mr. Meredith one thirty more seconds and.
I. Yeah, I I don't think there are any more, any more um calls coming through.
No, no problem. We'll be sure to get, if Mr. Meredith has a a question, he can be happy to email us and we'll be sure to get him an answer. So uh, being that there's no other comments, we would like to thank everyone for the attendance and participation. Once again, please note that staff are compiling all comments and questions raised this evening, as well as those submitted by email. As part of the budget process, we're making them available on the town's website along with response. Thank you so much, everyone, for participating. I I know we have a bit more to go. I'm going to call a five minute bio break. It's 9:40.
I apologize. Mr. Meredith is is back on the line.
All right, we'll have one more call. Crack at her. And Mr. Meredith, you had a question, sir?
Go ahead, Mr. Meredith.
Hello?
Hello.
How are you, sir? Sorry, we lost you there a second ago. You had a question?
Yes, I do.
Yes, please.
Uh, good evening, council and deputy in your worship. I'm just going to follow up back on the first question of the evening regarding our chief officer and his wage.
Yes, sir.
In regards to the increase, I want like a clarification on the, I guess it would be the customer service uh, person that we were going to be hiring.
No, uh, well, I'll ask if you'd like Mr. Denno to clarify one more time, but uh, Mr. Denno, if you care to.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Hopefully you can hear me, Mr. Meredith.
Yeah, I'm having some trouble here, but go ahead.
Yeah, the the budget is to cover staff again, including myself within the CAO office. And as part of our recommendation that I did make out earlier in the year, there was going to be a renewed focus on customer service uh, within the organization. So that budget is reflecting some increased responsibility with existing staff, not new staff, existing staff to look after some customer service responsibilities we're considering.
So to verify, to clarify that, some of that increases to do just with a bit of shifting at Town Hall from one department to another. Is that correct, sir? Mr. Denno?
Yeah, increased responsibility.
Yeah, wonderful. Is that satisfy your question, Mr. Meredith?
It just went from earlier, it was we're, it sounded like we were hiring someone for that position to now it's changed to putting someone in that position.
No, there was no, yeah, he, we were clarified that we apologize for the miscommunication, but no new hire, just different responsibilities from some of the people at Town Hall. Hope that clarifies for you, sir?
So, yes, that does. But so what you're, what I'm looking at 2020 with the the salary was two, two fourteen. I think that's what it is. I don't have it in front of me. So I apologize.
That's, that's, I believe that to be correct. Yes, sir.
Well, that's a phrase is what we're discussing here.
That's correct. No, uh, no increase with regards to the CEO. He's chose not to take a a increase. As he mentioned earlier this evening. Mr. Meredith, any other questions, sir?
Uh, that's, that's fine for tonight. I appreciate your time. I just want some clarification on that because I think due to the taxes at home, and I hope that we work hard to, if at any time in any, in this time of pandemic and everything that's going on, that we can strive for maybe a 0% tax tax year. Uh, I know you've tried for years, Deputy Mayor, and hopefully this is the year that we can achieve that.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the comments, Mr. Meredith. And have a wonderful evening and thank you for calling in this evening.
Take care. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, now to call this meeting closed. There's no further comment. We'd like to thank everyone once again for attending and participating. I'll ask for a five minute bio break. It is 9:45 right now. We'll be back at 9:50. Give everyone five minutes and we'll see you back there in a minute. Thank you. The items that were pulled, we had one item this evening, and that was a item number, sorry, that report CSR dash 2021 dash eight, Midland Airport 2019 Strategic Development Plan Next Step dated February 17th, 2021 be received and that council endorsed the recommended next step strategies outlined within report CSR dash 2021 dash eight as it relates to Heronia Airport Strategic Development Plan Report. Moved by Council Ochesky. I need a second, if we could. Counselor, um, again, uh, Counselor Ochesky, you wanted to comment on this item?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you very much to the member municipalities for talking so much about the airport lately. That's been great. Uh, just in terms of synchronicity, this motion did go before Pennington Machine Council and they just changed the composition of the committee. Um, the airport committee would like the power to um, have our own discussion about what the airport looks like in the next six months. We certainly welcome assistance from staff. One from each member municipality would be greatly appreciated, but we're not looking to firm that up or lock anybody in at this time. We'd like to have the further discussion on that. So uh, we appreciate the opportunity to work hard on the future of the airport. And I think the whole board is excited about the opportunity. So uh, what we're looking to do tonight is make a amendment or a friendly amendment to change the composition to just the airport board, along with one staff member from each member municipality. I apologize for pulling this so late, and I did provide a bit of language for the motion.
Wonderful. Any other question or comments with regards to this item? I see none. Madam Clerk, is there, oh, Mayor Strathern?
Thank you. Are you, are you asking whether there are comments or questions around the, an amendment to have only the board, uh, the, sorry, the commission handle the next phase of this?
I was just about to ask the clerk whether, what we had to do with regards to the friendly amendment or if we needed a brand new amendment. So Madam Clerk, can you provide me with some clarity if we need to, if a friendly amendment is fine? Or do we need a brand new motion?
Um, well, what I would do is read, read the current motion and and then um, and then I would read the proposed amendment to the motion. So so the the council would vote on the amendment. So the um, that report CRS twenty 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 one dash eight, Huronia Airport 2019 Strategic Development Plan Next Step dated February 17th, 2021 be received and that council endorses the recommended next step strategy as outlined within the report, within report CSR 2021 dash eight as it relates to the Huronia Airport Strategic Development Plan Report. Now, the proposed amendment is to add on to this motion add um, and that the composition of the committee be composed of airport commission members and three staff members, one from each member municipality to be just, to be discussed. So that, so council would be voting on that portion initially. And if that is turned down, then then council will consider the main motion.
So you, do we need to read it again, or is that fine with hearing it from the clerk? Or I see that not ahead. Yes. So all those in favor? Oh, I apologize. I, Counselor, sorry, Mayor Strathern had a comment before we move forward. Mayor Strathern?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I appreciate the commission's desire to continue with their efforts around the the airport. And there have been a number of things that have that that they're doing that are actually improving the financial viability of the airport. But there are a couple of things here that I think go beyond the commission. The first is that um, it was the councils who basically requested an external review of the airport. It wasn't, I don't believe it was the commission, it was councils who requested an external review to look at governance issues, to look at, to get an external opinion of how the airport uh, was operating, how compared to its uh, its contemporaries out in the broader world and and to look at the governance of of same. They've come back, they've, they've, they've put a report forward, all the council sat and and listened to that. Um, and basically, the report was fairly, not not fairly, it was, I think, a good report. It reflected well on the airport and the work that commissioners have done particularly late in the last 12 months or so. Uh, and on terms of their, in terms of their efforts to increase revenues, which through hangar development and that sort of thing. But one of the issues that's before us is in fact governance and and that the recommendation was that we have a a skills based uh, a matrix developed and that's. a skills-based matrix developed and that we, and the other recommendation was so that we reach out to other agencies with respect to economic development around, around the airport itself. This is something that I think the, it takes us beyond, beyond the, the Commission itself. And by, and I think that the C O has put a lot of thought into this. And in looking at having the North Simcoe Community Futures people being involved on a, on a time-limited basis, not on an ongoing, I'm a board member in all this stuff, over three, four years, on a time-limited basis, meeting roughly once a month, same with Economic, sorry, the, yeah, sorry, the Economic Development Corporation, North Simcoe, also reaching out to members of staff and also council. And I think that when you start looking at governance and you're asking the people who are currently governing, it's sort of like the fox looking at the hen house, regarding hen house. It's not, there's a potentially a conflict there. I'm not saying that people would behave in a conflicting manner, but I believe there's a conflict there potentially. And I think also that the board has had ample opportunity to reach out to the other areas and, and not, now, maybe they will. But I think that the recommendation from staff was well thought out and board, sorry, the Commission rather, at the last instance is, is suddenly wanting to pull it back in. And I don't think that, given we've been doing externals, we've had an external review that we had to ask for, to look at the operations and that, that we now have a recommendation for an external look over six months. I heard at the Penetang meeting that the board felt it could do the dot job just as well as, because the motion was put forward back by another Commissioner, Commissioner, Counselor Rose. And he just made the statement that the Commission could do the job as well as staff. And yet, and yet, and staff were not in that, in that motion at Penetang Machine. And yet, we're looking to have staff participate in this, and I would say that you need beyond just staff and you need beyond just, and if, and if some of the commissioners are actually council members, and we're suggesting three council members. So if the commissioners want to participate, then say we'd like as commissioners, council reps to be on that, to be, to be part of that process and then consider that. So I frankly think that this is not a good idea to turn it back to the Commission. It goes against everything we've done so far to look at an outside view, looking in as opposed to an inside view, looking maybe out or sideways. So I would, I would, I will not vote for, for the amendment, and I would suggest that council seriously consider not voting. Thank you.
Well, I think if we're, if I'm understanding correctly, Madam Clerk, the first motion is the, the motion in front of us that's on the recommendation that report CSR dash two thousand twenty-one dash eight, that Heronia Airport two thousand nineteen Strategic Development Plan Next Step dated February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one be received and that council endorses the recommended next step strategy as outlined within report CSR two thousand and twenty-one dash eight as related to Heronia Airport Strategic Development Plan Report. So we have that motion in front of us if we'd like to vote on that.
So.
Well, that's the motion in front. So we need to come up with some clarification with regards to, unless I'm misunderstanding what the procedure should be, Madam Clerk, we have a recommendation in front of us, and we're now asking to change the recommendation. So I just want to make sure that we're dotting our i's across the keys.
Okay, so basically, the, the proposed amendment, the amendment is to be considered first. So you would want a mover and second or for that, and then, and then have a vote on that. And if that particular, if council decides to defeat that motion, then you revert back to the, to the original motion, which is the main motion.
All right. So the amended motion, if you could read, read it till we get on the, on the add to it, sorry, apologize, and then we'll allow Counsel Ochesky to comment. I just want to make sure I, I think I'm missing the original, sorry, the amended motion.
That's okay. So what council would be voting on right now is this particular wording and that the composition of the committee be composed of Airport Commission members and three staff members, one from each member municipality to be discussed.
Wonderful. You had question to comment with regards to this amended motion, Counsel Ochesky?
Yeah, thank you very much. Just have to respectfully disagree with your worship. I think the Airport Commission fully agrees that the Lumex report is a great report. And once the Lumex report has come forward, the Airport Commission has worked very hard to increase the throughput of the airport, increase customer base, increase business interest. We've had more knocks on the door during a pandemic in the last few months than we had the entire previous year. So since we did get the Lumex report, I think the airport has done an incredible job of increasing all of the things that we need to do to, to, you know, be self-sustaining and revenue positive eventually is the goal. And I think six months isn't too much to ask. I don't think the Airport Commission has been given a fair shot to, I won't say correct the ship or correct the flight, if you will, because I think we are on a good path right now. And I know North Simcoe Community Futures are incredibly busy right now. I, I know people who work there and are incredibly bogged down. I've reached out to them multiple times trying to help small businesses get a leg up during a hard time. So I know that they're incredibly busy right now. We do have a member of the E D C N S sitting on our current board who is very passionate about the airport and would work actively with us as the Airport Commission. All we're asking is for six months to, to get this business plan in motion. I think we've done a great job as a Commission. I would challenge you, your worship, to find another committee that can say that they've increased viewership, increased boots on the ground, increased knocks on the door during a pandemic. I think we've done a great job. I think we deserve the chance to be given six months. And in six months from now, if I don't come back to you with some solid answers on how we're going to be a sustainable business, then I'll eat crow, and you can say, I told you so, and worst-case scenario, we lost six months. And you can't add these other committees and board members and more staff members without adding cost to, which I think is counterproductive to what we're trying to achieve here during pandemic as well. So, thank you.
Counsel Maine?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just a little confused because what's being proposed in the report? Is it a separate task force, a nine-person task force? But does that work in parallel with the current commission? Oh, so it's replacing the commission with a task force?
No.
It's, okay, so they are separate?
Yes.
So.
Hold on one second. As I rep, Counsel Ochesky, do you care to comment?
Thank you.
Answer Mr., sorry, Counsel Maine's question.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you for the time. It's, it's more of a steering committee to say what that group feels is success for the airport in the future. I think the Lumex report made that very clear, and I think the board is empowered and very ambitious and very motivated to get this done, using as little staff resources as possible, as economically feasible as possible. And we are passionate and adamant that we can get this done. If that's not the will of council, then we'll work with what we have. But we as an Airport Commission do feel that we can certainly get this off the ground, for lack of better terms.
Thank for the clarification, Counsel Ochesky. Counsel Maine, follow up?
Yeah, so if we receive this report, are we enacting the terms of reference around the task force? Okay, because
Sounds like we are.
It, because for me, it doesn't, would not hurt to have the Airport Commission as an active stakeholder or as a participant on the task force if the whole point is to have a six-month kind of task force, figure out how to implement this plan. So it's either or, like, I, I certainly see the merit of a task force, and I certainly understand the value of what the Commission brings to it. So I, I, I think we can combine the two. I, I certainly understand the motion on a friendly amendment. I just didn't realize that we had to kind of decide upon this right now. Governance stuff usually takes a while, so perhaps we just simply receive the report and move forward and discuss what the potential composition of the task force would be. But again, now we have multiple partners and we have been the Penetang Tiny Tame. It's kind of going around in circles here. So either way, I mean, if the task force wants to do it, or if the Airport Commission wants to do it, they have our support. But I think the task force, it looks to be kind of a multi-organizational input. So it's very wise the way it was thought out. It just, I think that we have an opportunity here that people can work together.
Your worship?
This is, this isn't much from my perspective about the ability of the Commission to do its work. They're doing their work. They have, as far as I know, there's two reasonably large opportunities, one of which they're going to have to come back to the municipalities very quickly anyway. Has to do, you, you would have heard it mentioned during their presentation. I, I know the company that is looking to work with the, I, I've worked with them a little bit before we sent them over that way. So I, I get that the Commission's, you know, they've got some good things happening. Point is, is that we commissioned a study to look at at it. The study's been done. They've acknowledged the work of the Commission. But there's a governance issue here, and you can't have, to my way of thinking, somebody who's providing current governance, you can have them make a recommendation, but the question is, do you want them to? I think it would be nice to have externals look at that, consult with the Commission. But I mean, this, this, this recommendation that was put forward in terms of reference and the committee composition and so on, and what came out of the Lumex report was well thought out, I think, by the C O's and now presented to us in their report. And the Commission, I respect their desire to want to do this particular work, but I respectfully submit that on the governance piece, it should be an external. So I'll leave it that. I'm not going to, I'm sorry on this, but I, I do believe it's, it's a, there's a conflict there. And I do acknowledge, as Counsel Ochesky has said, the work of the board, and there are some very capable people there, so.
Counsel Gordon?
Maybe I missed this on the report, but what's the cost? Is there, is there an aggregate cost to our ratepayers for establishing this secondary body to do this work?
Well, there's definitely, there always, although our, our representative on the airport can answer that question if you don't mind, Counsel Ochesky?
Thank you very much. I know, as much as we've tried to work the budgets every year so that staff time is accounted into each committee, if we're going to look at things that way, adding staff time to the committee will indefinitely add cost. I think we just heard earlier about the rec center being a million dollars in the red, and we're going to talk about three municipalities sharing three hundred thousand dollars. I think the Commission's doing a great job. We're trending in the right direction, and I truly believe if you empower us to move this forward, we won't let you down, and you can hold me to that.
Mr. C O, do you have a comment?
I was going to just add, since, since it was a report brought forward by the C O's, I just wanted to, to make sure that we were answering Counsel Gordon's question, and, and there were no specific financials put in in terms of cost, but there is cost of time as Counsel Ochesky has indicated. So to the extent that staff would be involved and other organizations, their time would be the cost of all.
Follow up, Counsel Gordon?
Okay, so just so I'm clear, if, if it's not going to cost anything other than the people's time and everyone's interested in doing this, so they're not going to lament putting their personal time in, the Commission's going to continue doing their good job of, you know, trying to, you know, get off the ground and make the place more profitable. And then we in tandem have this new organization created of all the stakeholders who have that, that delineation between commissioners and the, the stakeholders. And it's not costing any more money, then why wouldn't we just let that go now? Why would we defer it for six months? Just let them, let them rip and work in parallel, and let's move the ball forward. Like, we're not, I don't see any negative. Like, what's, what's the, is there, is, is anyone taking this personally that it's some kind of vote of non-confidence that they want the six months for, Counsel Ochesky? Maybe you can fill me on what the, what the delay would, what, what's the benefit of the delay if this isn't technically costing us anything, and you guys can work in parallel towards the same goal?
Counsel Ochesky, do you care to comment?
Yeah, thank you very much. I think the Lumex report is doing what we're trying to accomplish with this subcommittee or this lead, like, whatever you want to call this steering committee. It's similar to Midland Council, putting the Midland Forward document together, and we all worked actively on the side at Midland Forward, and we all were the counselors that worked on Midland Forward. There's no external bodies brought in. We, we did this all together, and we talked about what Midland was going to look like and how hard we were going to work on it. The Airport Commission are passionate, eager, and ambitious, and seriously want this, this job to be taken on. The, the governance of the airport is something we can talk about. It's something that we do talk about as, as a Commission quite often. But currently, I, I think with what we're trying to achieve from the Lumex report, I think we do have the capabilities on the board. If a steering committee is formed, we will work around the steering committee, work with in parallel and in tandem with the steering committee, but we're passionate, and this has already passed in Penetang, Penetang Council has, has gone forward with this composition. So I'm just asking that this council is the same in terms of synchronicity and working as a team?
Wonderful. Counsel McGinn, then I'll go to your worship.
So one question I had was answered, and I thank you for that. I don't see any harm in trying. As you had said, you know, give us six months. I, one of the things that I, that I do try to support is groups taking things on and taking them on with their heart, and we do that. And the, the way that the Lumex report is written and just, just the way the composition is of the board and the people that is already there, I don't have any fear in supporting you in this. And I appreciate that you had said, you know, if it doesn't work out, that you'll come back and, you know, it'll be humble pie, buddy, but you know, there's, every now and then you got to say, you know, let's give it a shot. Do I think you're going to have to eat pie? I don't think you will. So I'm supporting you one hundred percent in this.
Your worship?
That's okay. Just go, I guess, a call question.
Wonderful. We, we hear them. Counsel Gordon, I'll lie, last comment?
Just a quickie. Just what does not work out look like? It's kind of a vague, you know, milestone for us to judge six months from now. But what can you help us out with, what, you know, what would not work, you know, work and outlook like for us?
Yeah, that's, yeah, thank you very much. That's a tricky question. I think it depends where your expectations are really. At, at the end of the day, the return on investment at the airport as it sits right now is already good, in my opinion, if not better than that. What the Airport Committee wants to do is come up with a plan to be self-sustaining, to be more publicly acknowledged as a public asset, better public education pieces around what the airport offers to the general public and what you're getting for your penny a day. So, yeah, we, we are totally passionate, eager about taking this on, and what success looks for us is being self-sustainable, revenue positive. We've got some great things in the works, and we've worked really hard on getting the infrastructure in place for the great things that are coming up, and we really want to be the team that drives this home.
Counsel McGinn, last question?
I'm sorry for, you know, the it doesn't work out comment, but it's, I think it will work out. So just to ensure for clarification that it's hopeful that akin to some other agencies, groups and boards that we have, the desire is to become self-sufficient and that this is the step that is needed, and these are the processes to go through to hopefully get there. And during that time period, there isn't going to be an abrupt lack of communication and involvement from us and member municipalities. I am understanding that correctly. And then I support you one hundred percent, and I wish, I wish everybody well, and let's see how this goes.
The motion's on the floor, amended motion, all those in favor? That's, I'll vote for it also. That's five. So that carried. All those are against? I see two and three.
Three.
All right.
I didn't vote that.
That's a five-three vote. Thank you very much. Good luck, Counsel Ochesky. Next item, we have COVID update from our C O, Mr. C O.
Deputy Mayor Ross?
Yeah.
So council just supported the, the amendment, correct?
Correct.
So now you would present the, the motion again as amended.
Okay, could you read that for us, please?
Yes, it can. So it's just that report CSR two thousand twenty-one dash eight. Yes, it can. So it's just that report CSR 2021 dash eight, Heronia Airport 2019 Strategic Development Plan, next steps dated February 17, 2021 be received. And that council endorses the recommended next steps strategy as outlined within report CSR 2021 dash eight, as it relates to the Heronia Airport Strategic Development Report. And that a composition, that the composition of the committee be composed of airport commission members and three staff members, one from each municipality, member municipality to be discussed. And prior to considering that, was there a mover and seconder for the previous motion?
Yes, there was a mover by Counsel Ochazki, second by Counsel McGinn.
Sorry, just clarifying. Okay. And that's the motion.
All those in favor?
Oh, is there a mover and seconder for this main motion?
It's Counsel Ochazki and Counsel Maine.
Okay.
All those in favor? Wonderful. So passed. Mr. CEO, you're up with our, is that fine? Sorry, Madam Clerk, we're following all procedure?
Nope, you're good to move on. Thank you.
Wonderful. Mr. CEO, COVID update, please, sir.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and members of council. A quick update in terms of COVID. I think, I think we all appreciate kind of the circumstance that certainly Midland and the rest of Simcoe continues to be in with, with the pandemic. 128 cases in total across Midland, six deaths, unfortunately. Simcoe has seen a little over 6,000 cases, 650 of those cases are, are active cases, 3% fatality rate. 160 of those cases are with the new UK variant, which as we know is highly contagious, will probably become the, the main variant of the pandemic. We are however, and you can see that both in Simcoe Muskoka and across the province, that the incident rate is declining, which is good. Hopefully it will continue that trend. And as a result, you saw the, the province list lift the lockdown restriction. So we are now in red control, still a very stringent area to be in in terms of the control measures that are in place. Certainly pretty severe. It's, it's the most severe in terms of restrictions before you go into obviously closing businesses. So again, there's still a lot of conditions that we need to operate on. And anytime you move from these various levels, there's about a two week waiting period from our experience to understand exactly what that means. Because there are always some subtle changes, red previously may not be what red is now. So we'll have those discussions with the health unit and with our municipal partners to find out exactly what it means. I think some of the basic restrictions of, of only having 10 people in sports facilities as example, no practices, no games, increased distancing really put some pretty onus restrictions on the use of those facilities, but we're going to try and see what is possible. We'll work with our associations to see what interest they have in this control level and what would happen should we move further down into the orange level and prepare ourselves for that. So that's an important consideration. We're also taking a look at town hall to see if certainly we can continue to obviously operate the way we are today with, by appointment, but can we relax that a little bit and set and allow some, some foot traffic to come in without appointments. So we're making that assessment now and we should be able to make any adjustments and announce those fairly shortly. The other thing that's, that's pretty active as well is we're being asked to look at a mass vaccination center in Midland. So the use of our facilities provide vaccinations at, at one of our areas. So our, our staff have been working with the health unit to assess whether that's possible. Unfortunately, that doesn't come with any, any funding for costs. So that is certainly something every municipality that's being asked to participate in needs to consider. The health unit is trying very hard to see if they can get any funding for us. But it will be certainly one of the considerations. We obviously want to, to support our communities. All of our communities, if we can do that, it would require some, some effort, obviously, and some attention from our staff. Because this would run for quite an extended time. I think it's from March to August and potentially longer if there are booster shots. So we're taking a hard look at that. But again, you know, we'll, like all Midlanders, we'll, we'll try and do our best to, to respond. So that's an important aspect. The last thing I'd like to say, I'd like to give a bit of a shout out to the communication teams across North Simcoe. They, they came together and, and put a campaign to, to raise awareness about staying home, staying safe and staying lives. And, you know, they put some radio ads together. We had the participation of the various mayors across North Simcoe and we created some pretty cost effective ways to, again, get that message out and, and make it a really unified message about North Simcoe. So I just wanted to, to thank all of them. That's, that's the extent of my update, Deputy Mayor, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Denault. And I definitely support the rec center in any means possible to get a vaccine rolled out to the community. We, I, I don't think anybody could handle a third time lockdown. So I just pray that we can get this vaccine rolling. So kudos to you for putting a rec center out there and it really is the key to everyone's, the mental health and happiness is to get this vaccine going and, and get back to normal. Because I honestly believe if we're going to ask our community or any community or Ontario Canadians to lock down a third, a third time. I don't know if that, you know, people can handle that. So let's hope we can get that vaccine, get that rec center open for everyone to come and get it. So I appreciate that. Questions? I saw Counsel Ochazki and anybody else? Please hold your card. I'll make a list. Counsel Ochazki?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you so much. Gotten a ton in emails today about opening the rec center and the ICE and all that stuff. I don't envy the position that you and our staff are in right now. I feel, you know, it's kind of been downloaded onto us a bit prematurely. I don't know if this is, in my opinion, the time to be opening the floodgates, but I guess that is where we're at and it is what it is. So as council's informal social media guy, I'd like to apologize to you for the runaround today about the budget increase in your wages. It was certainly a challenge and we'll do our best to get ahead of that tomorrow and, and clear the record. That was inappropriate and some people owe you an apology. So on behalf of the social media world, without fearing a point of order for getting off topic, I apologize to you. Thanks for your time.
Counsel Maine?
I, I didn't actually have a COVID question. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Counsel Gordon?
Thanks. I'm just echoing the response to all the emails that we're getting about the sports and rec center. We've got to find a way to keep it affordable and get it open when we can. Unfortunately, I mean, following the news today, the, the murder hornet equivalent of COVID has just reared its head. We now have apparently the combination of more than one variant into something called a recombinant virus. And that is now starting to happen in Canada. This is, I would just, I've pulled it up now to make sure I pronounced it properly. This was on CTV News today. So realistically, I think, you know, we can hope for the best, but I'm pretty confident that we're going to see another wave and probably another one. And very likely more lockdowns. And I hate to be Debbie Downer here, but, and apologize to Deibys of the world. But, you know, people still don't take this thing seriously. It's still just a flu to many. And, you know, I, I see and hear this constantly. So I think we need to plan for the very real eventuality, plan for the worst and hope for the best. If we can, you know, use the sports and rec center, any of our facilities to stage vaccinations, that's fantastic. I mean, why wouldn't we? But the real reality of us just wanting, trying to put this behind us with a few vaccinations and get back to life as normal, as much as I would love to see that happen, I'm also quite a realist and I suspect that given, you know, the general public apathy now and they're sick, you know, sick and tired of COVID. And they're having troubles masking and social distancing and not doing things they're not supposed to not do. Honestly, believe we're in for the bit of more of a long haul here. So let's be prudent and careful and not build up people's hopes too much. I, just like the rest of you, want these services to resume ASAP. And I've said, said so many times over the past year. But we do need to, caution has to be the, the primary driver here. So again, let's plan for the worst, hope for the best. And, you know, I've already gone on the record several times now about my ideas for the budget and we're going to beat that to death next week. But we really need to look after cost containment and helping our citizens out. So let's do what we can. And I appreciate the efforts of our CAO. And I will admit that I, I also read those posts online and while I didn't comment, I don't think I commented directly about it because I wanted to hear about it tonight. It is nice to hear that the wage increase isn't yours. I mean, not that you wouldn't, you know, you could still ask for one, but it is nice to have some clarity here. Although the, the question still remains, you know, who else is in your department that's getting a wage increase and includes wages and benefits? So that we will, we will unearth and have fulsome discussion about next week. So anyone who is following this and is concerned, we're doing it next week and it'll all be cleared to everybody at the same time. So thanks for the update and taking it on the chin tonight. That couldn't have been easy. I was kind of shocked to see your camera come on for that one. I thought Ms. Yorcan was going to handle it for you, but good on you for, for stepping up.
Thank you, Counsel Gordon. Mayor Strathern?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just, I'm sort of a glass half full kind of guy. And I think that if we do follow, and so far we've been very good in this area at following community safety and health advisory guidelines. And basically what the medical officer of health for the Semcoe Muskoka District Health Unit is saying, stay home, stay safe, save lives. And the life you save might be your grandmother, it might be your neighbor, it might be your family member, it could be a coworker. Now is not the time to be letting your guard down. And as far as these vaccines and the mutations, mutations that are going on, the M and R A vaccines that are Iser and Moderna have developed through some groundbreaking work of a woman out of the University of Pennsylvania some time ago. Our very, very robust data from, data from the Israeli experience in which they've inoculated a phenomenal percentage of their population shows that these vaccines are robust against these variants. So it's what I understand that, you know, there's the, what was it? The killer wasp or whatever, murder wasp of maybe there. I think, I think that these, these vaccines, from what I understand of my schooling way, way back when, would suggest that the technology that being employed here is very easily modified to, to deal with these things. So I think, I think that while I agree with Counsel Gordon that there will be people who abuse this situation, most people are, will follow the guidelines, you know, wash your hands. Same old thing. And every time I turn on CBC News, it's the same old thing. Wash your hands, socially distance, wear a mask. If we do that, it doesn't matter what these things are. And if you, as much as you can stay at home, do so. And, you know, if you want to go outside and get some fresh, then go for a walk, but, but be aware of who's around you. That's really all I have to say. I think there's a bright light, it's not a freight train.
Let's hope.
It's all.
Any other questions? Yes. Any other questions? I see none. Thank you very much, Mr. CEO, for your update. Appreciate it. Any notice of motion? Counsel, sorry, Mayor Strathern? You're muted, sir. You're muted.
Got to do it at least once during.
Yeah, yeah. That's that new catchphrase for 2021.
You're muted. I just, while we're going through the budget process, I thought back to something we did last year. And so I would like to put on the floor that, that as a community relief measure, staff be directed to examine the implications of waiving tax interest and penalties with a report to be brought forward to the future meeting of council when that would apply to.
Thank you very much.
Facts as I do this Friday, I think it is. So it'll be the next one.
Wonderful. We'll look forward to that for our March 4th meeting or 3rd, sorry. Any other notice of motion? I see none. Any announcements? I'll start with Counsel Ochazki. Go to Counsel Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm chatty tonight. So this Saturday is the coldest night of the year walk and Counsel Maine and I are going to do our walk this Saturday and I haven't registered a team on the website yet, but my street, the Lakewood drivers are kicking some butt, raising some serious cash here. So it's been so great to see my little street get so politically active all of a sudden and they're all in for the Guest House homeless shelter this Saturday. So we're all walking, we're all going to walk separately and we're going to distance. But something we're all excited about and it's, it's, it's great to have something to be excited about, supporting a great cause. They're also looking for winter jackets, hats, tukes, mitts, skirts and that kind of stuff. So if you can gather any of that kind of stuff, if you want to leave it curbside, Saturday, I'm happy to do a round and pick some stuff up and drop it all down to the guest shelter. So just get ahold of me. A very easy guy to get ahold of. So something to be excited about, coldest night of the year.
And now Counsel Ochazki, if you could share with us where someone like myself could make a donation.
Sure. I'll send you the link. The easiest way to do it is just go on Google and Google coldest night of the year, Guest House. And it'll come up on the site. I recommend the Lakewood drivers, awesome group. I would donate to them. Hopefully by tomorrow, if I'm not too tired, there's a team Midland up there to donate to as well. So.
Wonderful. That's great. Congratulations and thank you so much for your, your efforts. Counsel Gordon?
Thank you very much.
And I apologize before you go. And of course, Counsel Maine for his efforts and thank you both for stepping up. I apologize. Counsel Gordon?
So needless to say, there were some people that tried to get ahold of us to have more comments for the budget tonight unsuccessfully for like round two. So they've been encouraged to send those in to the email and so they get collated and answered by staff. However, I've also, I guess, most of you know, or probably all of you know, I host these Zoom, informal Zoom meetings where up to four counselors can participate and usually only have three. It's usually myself, Counsel Prost and Counsel McGinn. And I'll be hosting one of those this Sunday at 7:00 PM, 7 to 8, and I'll advertise that on my website and on my social media. And I invite anybody who wants to have last minute kicks at the can of at least three counselors' ears about budget issues to, you know, talk to us. If we can regurgitate some staff answers from previously asked questions, we will. Other things we'll just put in our pocket and bring them to the council Zoom session Monday to Wednesday. So it's just another way to stay connected with us and get questions answered. So if you did miss the opportunity, I didn't want you to think that, you know, you're stuck with just an email. Please do that as well. But I will be hosting that and watch for the announcement, you know, shared by at least two or three of us the next day or so. Thank you for your participation and your patience.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? I had a couple if I could. First of all, I wanted to thank Mr. Campbell, Mr. Jeremy, Mr. Denault. And especially Madam Clerk for the help tonight with regards to our budget public meeting. Went much better than I had had expected. I didn't sleep much last night worried about how it was going to go. So I was happy to see that it went quite smoothly and I wanted to thank all the participants, all the residents of, that called in with their questions and the concerns. It's, I know for myself and council that they do not fall on deaf ears and we definitely value your, your input and your opinion. I also wanted to remind everybody that unfortunately due to COVID, the CLH Community Living Heronia Gala would be coming up on February 20th at usually a great night to get together. This year it's virtual and it's free. So I would, after you support Counsel Ochazki and Counsel Maine with the coldest night walk, I would suggest you come in and watch a free concert of the truths. Sign up. They're looking for people to, it's the truth trio playing on Saturday night. I believe it starts at 7:00 PM. You can click, go on the website, CLH Foundation Midland, it'll pop right up and they're asking you to sign up, but they're looking, you know, any type of donation. There's a silent auction and you get to enjoy a free concert of the truths. So please support another great group in the town of Midland and North Simcoe, Community Living Heronia. So any other announcements this evening? We'll move on to our next, sorry. I'm not sure if you have a motion to get us out of this, your worship? I'll leave it with you.
He, Deputy Mayor, I do. Moved by John Maine, sorry, Counsel Maine. Seconded by Counsel Ochazki that the committee of the whole rise and report. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone, for the great evening.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And so then our next item would then be that recommendations of the committee of the whole for the meeting of February 17, 2021. And so then our next item would then be that recommendations of the committee of the whole, the meeting of February 17, 2021 be adopted as a resolution of council. All those in favor? Thank you. That also carries. Next, moved by Counsel Downer, seconded by Counselor Prost, just not here, Counsel McGinn. That bylaw 2021-5 being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of the regular council meeting with closed session held February 17, 2021 be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Thank you. Last but not least, moved by Counsel McGinn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Ross, that this regular meeting of council adjourn at, if I can find, somebody tell me what the time is.
Sorry, 10:38.
Thank you. At 10:38 PM. All in favor? Thank you. Stay safe. Enjoy, enjoy the rest of your evening and we'll see you bright eyed, bushy.